Traditional territory of the Tenaha, the Sylix, and the Senix people. And is home to metes and many diverse Aboriginal persons. We honor their connection to the land, rivers, and respect the importance of the environment to our strength as a community. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Um, and I'd like to know if there's any lead items. I don't think there is. And I'd like a motion to adopt the agenda, please. Councillor Renwick and Councillor Morrison, second, all in favor. Kerry, thanks very much. Adoption of the minutes of the previous meeting of the Committee of the Whole on July twentieth. Councillor, oh, okay, so we have staffs doing the transit exchange one, right? Committee of the Whole on July twentieth, moved by Councillor Morrison, second by Councillor Renwick, all in favor. Kerry, thanks very much. A public presentation, uh, so if we have anybody in the public, apart from those of you that are presenting, uh, formally, if there's anybody in the public that wishes to speak, now's your chance to come forward. And Bill was here earlier, and I think the rest of you are on the agenda, and the other two folks are staff. So we'll be skipping that piece, and presentations and delegations. Jeff, uh, you're up from the Nelson Lees Recycling Depot.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you for having us back here once again. As you will recall, it's been just over a year now since, or not quite a year, sorry, um, since we began the Household Waste Collection Program at the recycle depot. And I wanted to give you an update on just how that's proceeded to date. You will be in a separate forum discussing whether or not we're going to be granted an exception for the bylaw to continue to keep the storage containers in the front yard, which is the issue, not the collection of the stuff, but the location of the containers. So I don't really want to deal with that tonight, except to provide you information on how the program has worked. As we are all very well aware, life has changed. I've given you in the presentation some, um, do I do this?
Yeah.
I do. Okay, good. All right. The, these are the products that we took in prior to the Household Waste, program. These are the ones that we took beforehand, you could, but these are the numbers just since last August. So basically, one year of products listed here. We did shut down for nine weeks, uh, in March and April, um, until mid-May, just for safety concerns as much as anything. We have changed our hours of operation because of that. Rather than being open six days a week, we're now open five. Uh, we're closed on Sunday and Monday. We do that for more space inside the building, so that we have sorters come in on the weekends or on Monday, so that they can sort and not interfere with the public coming in. So really, we have a, you know, a five-day opening with a seven-day operation. And we even have some of the, uh, transport trucks come in and pick up on the Monday when we're closed. If you've been down there at all, you know that, uh, things are busy and the parking lot's full. And, uh, so we do limit who comes in the building and how many people come in each time, so we're there. You can see from the list of, just in one, one year, twenty-one thousand cans of paint, um, sixteen thousand light bulbs, fluorescent tubes, three point three tons of batteries, and that doesn't include car batteries. We don't take car batteries. These are household batteries that people bring in, you know, double As, triple As, Cs, over three tons, and that's metric tons.
What's going on out there?
I don't know. Small appliances, small appliances, um, amazing, twenty-eight tons of small appliances. I mean, it's just amazing how much is there.
Jeff, I gotta tell you, I got seven grandchildren, and I swear to God, the toy manufacturers are owned by the battery companies.
Oh, I'm sure, or they own the battery companies themselves.
Everything's got a battery in it.
Can you get the battery out?
You know, eighty tons of electronics that we used to just go in the trash, um, we now take care of. Now, we've, you know, six point eight million cans and bottles. It's an amazing number that just come in here.
That's just from Renwick's place. Out the lake and not coming to one in town.
There's gotta be a COVID bump in there.
The, the liquor stores and the other government have not quit taking cans and bottles, um, for a while. And so when we reopened, we would take them, but they didn't open as quickly as we did. And they've limited how many they take back. At the same time, Product Care has introduced a, uh, pilot project that we volunteered to be involved in. And don't ask me why, but there was a difference between beer cans and pop cans. They couldn't go in the same container. Now they can. So people bring them all together now. So that, kind of our COVID bump, I guess, from that. But, um, it hasn't been a bump that's gone away so far, particularly because the liquor stores, you know, really don't want to take them anyway. For them, it was a, well, it's a legislative requirement. If you sell it, you have to take it back. But I understand, I understand they're working on that in a different form than this, uh, that's there. Anyway, the Household Hazardous Waste Collection began in October of last year, October nineteenth, and that's why we're back now for one year. You can see with the oil, ten thousand plus liters of oil, over a thousand liters of antifreeze, fifty-five gallon drums of material. Just liquid household products that people have brought around. Herbicides, carpet cleaners, you can see them listed there. Things that we all have in our garage or our shed or under the sink and now aren't sitting there. There's one particular product I'll talk about in a minute, but, um, you know, it's amazing how, uh, much there is. And I know that, uh, I know that when this started, there was a concern from some members of council about people coming in from elsewhere and, and, you know, using the facility within the city, and that was a concern. Now, since then, um, there've been, it was a roundup in the Casp on the weekend and up in, up the valley. There's two of them up there. Castle Gar has had a roundup, um, and Creston has had a roundup. They all were very well attended with trucks full of stuff getting there. So, you know, we don't have an indication, and from our own employees, we don't have an indication that people are traveling with this stuff and bringing it into town. So most of the, what we're seeing here is local, you know, at least within the surrounding areas. We don't see that anybody's traveling any great distance. They had a hundred and sixty carloads up in, uh, the Casp on the weekend, you know, a hundred more in Silverton, and that's just from up in the valley. Castle Gar had over two hundred there, and you know, when we had the roundups here, we had to turn people away a lot of times by the end of the day. So you can, you, the difference is, um, very, very noticeable, I think.
Can I just ask you about this twenty kilos of mercury?
That's the one I figured somebody would ask about. Somebody brought that in very early after we opened the program. Um, they knew what it was, um, probably from an old mining operation. Somebody's father or grandfather had it stored in his shed, um, but the people that brought it in, brought it in, they had it properly labeled, properly contained, properly sealed, and we put it in its own separate container, and it was disposed of properly, but, uh...
Much better than flushing it down the toilet at Second Beach at, uh, Stanley Park.
Well, that's right. That happened today. There was, you know, there've been three this month, mercury spills at Stanley Park. And we caused hazmat spills, and that was from a broken thermometer, they think, today. When we were kids, that was fun when the thermometer broke. Times are different. Um, so that's there. So that was the mercury, but, uh, it was, you know, well taken care of.
People have actually left that at Selkirk College.
There was some from Selkirk College that we got, uh, two years ago at a roundup. We got almost ten... Oh, okay. Well, we got almost ten pounds that time, so, you know, not overly different now. It would have been, you know, a little more. And it's, well, with the liquids, we do the solids, and they're, you know, again here, you know, fertilizers, pesticides, um, even soap, drywall, but things that, you know, you kind of wait and, oh, I got containers bed, I may need it again. Well, after a while, you don't need it again, and you end up throwing them out. Now, at least people aren't throwing them out, so they're not disappearing for us. When we take a product in, we separate it into specific containers, and they're all sealed in drums. So not only are they in the shipping containers, um, they're stored on a false floor above the main floor of the shipping container, and then they're within a metal drum and within a separate container inside. So we got, you know, basically four levels of protection when we're dealing with, uh, some of these products when they come in. We had everyone trained in handling this material when we came in. We adopted a practice very early on in consultation with WCB to make sure that, uh, we handled the product. You bring it to us, we'll take it from there. You bring it to the parking lot, that's all we're asking people to do. We talked to the operator of an oil facility somewhere else, and he said, yeah, we have it set up, people can dump the oil in, and there, it's just a mess. Since people spill it all the time, so we have, you know, we don't spill it because we have specific people that look after it. We don't let the people in the containers, not, we don't trust them, but it's just, you know, we take the care to do it and make sure it's handled properly. Most people are aware of what they're bringing in, so we can talk to them beforehand, make sure we know where it is, make sure what container it has to go into. We are not obliged under the contract with Terra Pure, which is the company that picks it up, to, you know, identify all of the products. But if there's one that we can't identify and the people can't tell what it is, if we think it's part of the program, we take that again, and it's stored separately and dealt with by Terra Pure, and that's under our own contract to be able to do that, because we don't want to, uh, put our own people at risk to be able to deal with that and, uh, see what happens. I don't know how readily it's available here, but WCB came down when we first got there. As it turns out, they had very little concerns. Um, you know, we had seven orders written against this, it sounds bad, but, you know, post your monthly sa- safety meetings, you know, have a worker representative at the safety meetings, things that, you know, with a small operation, you don't necessarily think about. And we'd expanded very rapidly that one at that time. You know, we had to have a worker's representation on this safety meeting. At that point, we had four full-time employees, but one of them has to be the worker representation, representative on the meeting. That was where we, they helped us develop the program to have the separate storage containers for all the different types of products that we deal with, and that was a big help to us there, and that's why we, because of our discussions with them, that's why we went to the program where we take, even if you've got oil to spill into a container, some people wanted the container back, said, no, you can't have it, you're not taking your container with you. If you brought it in, we're not, you know, you're not gonna dump the, cause oil out yourself and take your container back. We won't let them do that, and we haven't had any difficulties with that since, since the beginning. And they showed us how to properly separate the chemicals and deal with them in the separate containers when they're there. And there's a letter there from Terra Pure, which is the outfit that, uh, collects this stuff around the province, you know, attesting to the fact that ours is probably one of the, if not the cleanest depot in the province that they're dealing with at the moment. So all those issues that we dealt with, you know, in previous years, we've had no incidents. We've had zero spills on anything that's gone on. Had no complaints about smells or anything coming out of there. We, you know, one of the things we dealt with was WCB was ventilation, and we changed the manner in which things are ventilated from the containers from the start, and, and that stopped that stuff. We've had no injuries, we've had no complaints, um, no conflict with the market, and of course, it's down there twice a year, twice a week this year, not just the once, and we've had no conflict with them whatsoever as far as that's gone. Commercial products, we had a few people at the beginning come and see us. Uh, well, somebody came in with a U-Haul trailer full. You know, we sent them away, and, you know, the commercial operators that we talked to said, look, this is a residential program, it's not for you. You have to follow the same rules you followed before, and they were all pretty good about it. Nobody's dropped anything off since. Um, I mean, you can tell, you know, from talking with our staff that work down there, you can pretty well tell when it's a commercial operation as opposed to somebody else. You know, one, you see them regularly if they're gonna try to do a commercial, two, the quantities aren't gonna be, you know, are gonna be there, and like just the type of containers it is, you know, we can tell from that whether it's commercial or not. So it really hasn't been an issue that we've, you know, that's caused us, uh, any real difficulty at all. And even the non-regulated materials, that's the stuff that we don't quite know what it is, but we get. Now, that's a, a chargeback for us by contract through the GVRD, or, sorry, don't live there anymore, RD, RDCK, back to, uh, you know, to, to Terra Pure, because they have to handle them differently when they're products that they don't know. I know one depot in the province where their, their chargebacks for that were over a hundred thousand dollars for dealing with products that they didn't know how to deal with. Ours is, best figure I can get out of the regional district is that it's been minimal expense for them, and it hasn't been an issue at all. It's, uh, cost us any ground. And the same with night drops, you know, we were concerned with that a few years ago. That has virtually been eliminated. If anything, now, somebody will drop off, you know, a TV, you know, we got electronics dropped off at night, the odd time, but, uh, you know, they're not, one, they're not a danger. Uh, we haven't had anybody attempt to drop off hazardous waste products, um, since we've opened. Now, we have it, you know, it's all under camera and lights now, and that makes a difference, so we can view those. You know, our manager who lives in town, you know, can see those at any time, you know, anytime of day or night, and we can see what's going on down there.
Jeff, we're down to a couple of minutes, but I see you're down to a couple of slides.
All right, okay. I just want to talk about, you know, the work that Lees do in the community, and a lot of it is through the ho- hot, um, the depot. You know, we have bottle drives for some of the different groups, um, and there's a few listed there that we've had bottle drives for. You know, as a hockey team, we dedicate February to autism, and we also have a hot, um, bottle drive for them as well, and they come in. Or in addition to, you know, we have the hospital trailers around, and they've sent us a letter, which you'll see there, but, you know, for the amount of work we've been able to do for the hospital foundation. And we're, I think, we're the one of the largest, if not the largest employer from the Nelson Care Society, for hiring the people there to, uh, help us with sorting and what we're doing as far as that goes. And there's a letter from the hospital, and any questions I'm going to have to deal with, if you have any.
Perfect. Councillor Woodward.
I did want to say, you know, I think one other piece that we were worried about was flood mitigation.
Yes.
Um, because Kaltma Creek was right there, and, um, I went and, I remember, when we did that, I went and looked at it, it looked, like it looked great. You did a good job lifting it off the ground, and...
We exceeded the height limit recommended by SNC Lavalin, which was your contractor of choice that we dealt with, and we exceeded that by a couple inches, which we're only like six inches anyway, I think, and we're slightly above that. And with the false floor inside and everything in the containers inside too, we've, you know, we've increased that level quite a bit. Of course, this year, it was no issue, so we can't, you know, you can't test that unfortunately until it's too late. But, uh, you know, we've, we've gone beyond the specifications that they wanted us to list, uh, and to meet as far as that went. And, uh, you know, it's been there, and there hasn't been any issues since then. So I guess in a different form, you're gonna deal with the bylaw exception, uh, which we'd asked for for an additional three years. That'll give us time to, well, you know, as we all know, this year is kind of thrown everything for a loop, including our future planning, including everybody's future planning about what we're gonna do, are we gonna stay there, are we gonna try to look somewhere else? You know, all of that's been kind of thrown for a loop this year. So we need some time to sort that out, and, you know, who knows when the world's gonna sort out? A lot of it might be dependent on what happens on TV tonight, I guess. As far as that goes, but, uh, you know, well, that'll give us, that'll give us sufficient time to, you know, deal with that area down there, and just see what happens with the program and what other options may be available to us. But right now, we're capable of staying there and under, you know, we leased that building, so it's not ours. We can't do a lot with it, although we are currently in discussions dealing with the, um, the mural program. And we've got the owner on side for that, for the, the back of the building that faces the park, so we're trying to deal with that as well at the same time. But, you know, it's not our building, so it wasn't quite as easy for us to do that, but that will work out.
Well, thanks, Jeff, and I imagine that'll be coming on our agenda, you know, in your future for potentially an extension, and thanks for all your good work and your volunteerism, as Bill pointed out tonight. So much happens with volunteers in our community, it's staggering some days. Thanks for all your good work.
And we are playing hockey this year.
I see that, yeah.
Whether it's good or not, I can't tell you. I mean, I agonized over this all summer long. I'm also on the board of the league itself, so, you know, we had twenty teams to sort out, and who can put a team on the ice? What conditions are we gonna have? And they really went down to the last minute, and is it gonna work out? I don't know. We will broadcast this year on hockey TV, not play full screen, which we've had for a number of years. Now, it's a better deal, and you can watch hockey all over North America if you want to for one, the one price you pay for the month, but that's where we are, so...
Thanks very much.
That'll be there. Thanks very much for all your time.
Hang on, Councillor Page has one question, I think.
Yeah, I do. Um, Jeff, this is one of the first pieces of business we had, and I just wanted to say, I think, we gave you guys a pretty rough time with the questions and the peppery, and I think I was pretty out there too, and I just wanted to say, it's turned out really nicely.
Thank you.
Been an excellent job, and, and I really appreciate the work that you guys have done.
Appreciate it too, thank you.
He's learning to be a politician here. It's taking a while, but he's getting there.
I've interviewed enough, so...
Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff. Take care. Okay, up next is the Youth Corps presentation, and that's, uh, Richard Klein is presenting to council regarding the proposed Seventh Street Garden. The presentation is for information only. Councillor will be asked to consider the association's request at an upcoming meeting.
We got two of us here today.
I see that, yeah, so, um...
Welcome.
Multiply.
Well, do the best you can on the social distancing, it's important, but you will have to share the microphone somehow. You can pull it over either direction or do whatever you have to do. Or if you want, uh, we have masks, we can give you a mask each if you want one.
We've got, we've got masks, but it's hard to speak through the mask.
Oh, I understand, yeah, yeah. All right, you're off and running.
So Heather and I both wanted to present, i- in some way, this is a bit of a complicated picture, but on the ground, not so much. I'm representing the Youth Climate Corps, which now is aligned, uh, we're in a, in a collaboration with Wildsite, which is a conservation group based out of the East Coonies in Cranbrook and Kimberley. So in some way, we've, we've, um, joined with them in this first season of our, um, of our program, because they provide us with the administration and communication, a whole bunch of office support that we, we need when we get up out of the ground. So part of, and, and Heather, um, has worked at the Nelson Community Food Center, she's a teacher in, in food systems at LVR, and she and I have both been working hand in hand on this proposal to see, um, a, a community garden potentially established, so that's what, uh, um, what we're inviting council to consider at the Seventh Street Garden site, so down in that very dense area of Lower Fairview. The plan we have is to, um, ask for a permit to occupy that goes alongside the existing permit to occupy that was granted to Seeds who wishes to move a greenhouse that was once at Lakeside Park onto that same site on the CPR right-of-way site. And just to give you some background, the Youth Climate Corps, um, is a initiative that we began this spring, in the midst of, um, the COVID pandemic, it seemed like, uh, an opportunity to, um, some of the, um, the issues that were emerging in, as we went into lockdown in Nelson and other places were focused around community resilience, uh, youth unemployment. That it kind of underscored the need to create more, um, uh, community resilient, um, I guess there's other words for that, but it kind, it seemed to underscore the necessity of working together to make the community stronger places. And, and in some way, the Youth Climate Corps, um, we've received funding through the provincial, um, there's a, um, youth community partnership the provincial government is funding, so we've, we've got funding now for fourteen young people, reaching the ages of nineteen and twenty-eight. We've done our initial youth, uh, leadership development program that just ended yesterday, and these young people are, are gonna be, um, focused in two teams. So they're, they're, um, not only intent to hopefully do some, some build-out of this community garden project, but they'll be working on, um, we're working with DC Parks starting next week on clearing the, um, the, the treatment area that, uh, went on either, along Sabota Road up to the city's water intake. We're actually going in there with brush saws and cleaning out the regen, which is mostly lodgepole pine, to make the right-of-way at either side of Sabota Road leading up to the intake, um, a, a more fire-resilient forest in the years to come, and safer for city employees to, to, um, to use that right-of-way in case there is some kind of fire emergency. So that's something that's one of the focuses of the program is, is, um, addressing fuel loads in the interface. So there's a few projects we'll be doing, some in Nelson, some up in Castle and Johnson's Landing, potentially some out in the shore. And then there's a third focus, which is, we've been, um, in discussion with Carmen Proctor and Paul Foffing from the RDCK, because another pillar of our program wants to be having these young people have an opportunity to, to engage in some deep energy retrofits and use the, the kind of subsidized labor that we have available to actually start to make a difference in terms of whether it's the Ecosave program in Nelson or some of the programs that Paul is working on in the RDCK, just, and in some way Carmen and Paul seem to be working hand in hand to see if we can create some success and some traction. So those are the three spheres, and really, um, we're here tonight to talk about the Seventh Street Garden, and Heather's more of a expert, both in terms of, um, um, a permaculture designer, but she also teaches food systems, so she's here to kind of fill in some of the pieces in terms of what this'll look like and, and, um... Did you want me to go in any more or read now?
No, I think that's enough, the background of the Climate Corps. So I've had, the PowerPoint isn't available, but I have this, um, design here that you can come take a look at. This, this was also sent out in the package, um, so it's on digital as well. So the, um, some of the goals for the Seventh Street Garden, I, I guess I can start off by saying that, um, we all know the benefits of gardening, so we don't have to talk about that too much, the physical, social, the, the environmental, uh, the mental health benefits, all of that i- is involved, is part of gardening. And so a community garden can just strengthen a community and build the resilience. There's many points in many different city documents over the past ten years that point out why we need more community gardens and why that's important. So we won't talk about that too much tonight. Mostly, I'll, I'll talk about some of the features of the planned garden. So the reason we're here tonight is to, um, seek out a permit to occupy, a license to occupy for this space down at Seventh Street, which we know that there's going to be, um, the Seeds organization has a license to occupy for their greenhouse already, and that's going up, and we hope to use the labor force of these wonderful, I met them this week, there's fifteen youth here, and they are as shovel-ready as anything, because like...
They just need some shovels.
They just need the shovel, yeah.
And they're, they're ready to go, and, um, they are gonna help build this greenhouse. So that's the, that's sort of step one, what they're gonna be doing, and we want to expand it. We said, let's take it a little bit bigger, let's, um, the license to occupy is looking at about half of the park, so kind of on the eastern side of the, uh, pathway in the middle, you can see here. And the plan is, some of the features will include, um, a, a large deer fence that will be surrounded by a food forest, to do some succession planting of some fruit trees and some berry shrubs in there. And then another big feature is the volunteer area. We know that, um, volunteers are gonna be a big part of this garden, and it's a place for the community to gather. Obviously, in these times, we'll do that in a way that's safe for everyone. But, uh, long-term, that can be used as a community, as an education space for, um, the, uh, groups that might gather there, and any group could end up using this in the future. So that's what we have here, and a tool shed and a place for garden waste. And then we've got fifty-two garden boxes. We, Richard and I spent a few afternoons this summer on this site, sort of walking it and mapping it out, and imagining where could we put these raised garden boxes. So if you've ever been to the site, you can see on the one side, there are already four garden boxes there that the folks from, um, the Lakeview Village...
I think some seniors there have maintained those over the years.
Yeah, and they're beautiful, and we've sort of said, let's just multiply these. So we're, the plan is to put it in fifty-two garden boxes with a portion of them, probably between ten to fifteen, designated for the Nelson Community Food Center. So, um, food, uh, food access is a big part of this, and making sure that, uh, access to safe, affordable, locally grown produce is accessible to everyone, not just the residents that live close by. They are gonna play an important role in this, because we're hoping to have a neighborhood garden committee form, and eventually, they will be the ones who can kind of take over, uh, the management of this garden space.
So, so, so part of what we're, we've been in, in collaboration with, not only with Seeds, but the Nelson Community Food Center, and, and Jessica from the Nelson Community Food Center is willing to have kind of the Nelson Community Food Center be the, be the party that would have, if the city approves it, the permit to occupy. So, so in, the Youth Climate Corps is, is, is conceived as the build-out arm of this. We provide the labor force, we're talking to Seeds in, in terms of helping, to help them get the greenhouse up. If certain pieces come into place, I think they still may be waiting on a, a survey or something for corner posts, but, um, long-term, the Youth Climate Corps will be moving on to different projects next year, hopefully the... long-term, the Youth Climate Corps will be moving on to different projects next year, hopefully that, you know, that, that, um, serve a, a functional, make, create functional benefit for Nelson in many different ways, but, um, long-term, this is seen as a collaboration between Seeds, uh, the Nelson Community Food Center, and, and we're hoping to create the conditions where neighborhood gardeners, people who live in there, it's the highest density area in, in my perception in Nelson, that also lean into, uh, taking part of this. Partly, we want to create a site that's beautiful. So it's not just gonna be a deer fence, we're gonna try and create some artistic elements where the horizontal members and the vertical come together, make it a place where people want to spend a Saturday afternoon. So that volunteer said that this area will have kind of a covered roof on it, so you can get rid of the sun and get rid of the rain, and, um, we're hoping that if we do it right, it's the kind of place where people want to join together in that neighborhood. And in some way, there's gonna be a beautiful kind of cross-fertilization between our ability to produce food in the, in a neighborhood setting, but also to support, um, some of the more underprivileged members of the society through the Nelson Community Food Center, and also to, um, to continue to put, um, wind behind the sails of Seeds, who, who's been doing this kind of work over a period of years in Nelson, so, um, I guess that's the vision, huh?
That's the vision, and another, I think another long-term goal would be to have this, um, to be a model, to, to set a precedent for how we can, community groups can grow food on city-owned land.
Whether there's something that happens in Rosemont in the future, it, to, to me, I think, a- and we don't know exactly where the, where the pandemic is gonna go, but I think even some of the, um, some of what the pandemic underscored is the need, uh, we're, we're calling ourselves a Youth Climate Corps, and, and, and part of this is about how do we get young people mobilized around the same issues that are gonna be even more important in a more climate-challenged future. When it's gonna be more important to, for instance, not import the majority of our food from places that are far away that take, um, emissions to get here. So it, we're, we're, we're also trying to give young people an opportunity to kind of step up and do the right thing in terms of being more, um, civic-minded, in terms of developing the leadership skills that they can then take to the next stage, whether it's in a vocational, uh, experience or getting more involved in communities like, like you folks have, in, in terms of the political level of, of, uh, commitment. So we're seeing it as a, as a both, um, an opportunity for them to get practical, uh, work and vocational skills, but also to kind of lean into their communities. And, um, and I guess we're hoping to have an opportunity to do some of that work right here at Seventh Street Garden.
Okay. Questions, starting with Councillor Page and then Councillor Woodward.
I love it, obviously. Uh, I'm wondering where the café will go. Um, my first question, uh, is, would you foresee for organic matter receiving drop-offs for compost, food cycler product, that kind of stuff to, to add?
Probably, in the future. Uh, there'll obviously like be things to work out with that, but, uh, right now, the, the garden waste planned site would just be for garden waste, um, until we can like manage the attractants and things like that down there, but there'd probably be space for that, for local residents to come together and do some composting.
Right, okay. And I, this is kind of a question for you, Kevin, too, if there's a way we can support something like this and get one of our requirements off the plate. Maybe there's a partnership there.
You sent that to Ginger, so we have a solution for them.
Perfect. Excellent. We can give them a little money for the service we don't have to implement.
Nice.
Um, and when do you...
We started with just garden waste because we understand there's complexities around gathering household waste in terms of animal byproducts, in terms of things that attack bears, so we're totally happy to look at taking the next step, but we wanted to also make it simpler to get going.
For sure.
Oh yeah, have you seen the material? That comes from the food cycler?
Yeah, for my clarity, it was, it's, I was definitely thinking specifically food cycler.
Oh.
The dried-up pilot.
Well, yeah, we're gonna need something to put in these boxes or something.
Yeah, lots of good brown material. Um, and when are you guys hoping to break ground on this amazing garden that is gonna be amazing? And we need, we needed last spring.
Well, we understand there's a vote in council possibly on the thirteenth of October, and then from my conversations with Sarah and Gabe, that it would be, if we're successful, a couple of days after that, but we have this funded crew available till, I mean, weather's gonna be a, a factor come into, into November. Part of our hope is to, um, get the greenhouse up quickly so we can have an indoor space to center some of these four-by-twelve boxes, but they're ready to go. We're, we're actually starting on projects on Monday.
You have them until when?
Uh, till January fifteenth.
And then you have to pick up another funding model, or do you have a...
We've got funding for the, for the labor and some of the admin. We're gonna be engaged in fundraising for some of the material costs around this garden. One of the advantages is that Wildsite does have, uh, charitable tax status, so we're hoping part of this leadership module that we're inviting the, these young people to enter into is, in some way, learning how to, um, kill what you eat. So in, in other words, how do we go after it? How do we go and go to, to the businesses, whether it's, you know, hardware stores that could donate fencing or, or other farmer-supplied places? So we're looking to, we can't really do this until we have the permit to occupy in place, but then in short order, we're hoping to see if we can find some other sources of funding, including potentially from the city if there's anything available around this food security piece. But, um, we're, I guess we're i- in some crazy way optimistic if we have to come up with sufficiency that way.
Well, hit, hit me up on the, on Vernon, when you guys are looking for donations. It's a great idea.
Thank you.
Councillor Woodward?
Yeah, I, I just, uh, you know, as I'm listening to your presentation, I'm thinking of like, how many boxes is, is checks in terms of our, uh, our O C P, our official community plan, and the path twenty forty, and also community building. Like you said, you know, youth, youth employment, um, skill building, like a lot, I, I feel like the garden is just kind of a, uh, it's a, it's a, it's something to, it's like a foundation to work from. And then so much can be built out of it. But, um, yeah, I'm wondering if, like, you know, there's a lot of apartment buildings down there, and, uh, and, and, uh, seniors, and I just think like, you know, there's people that would wanna grow, but they maybe just have a few things on their, on their deck, but it is really like a great location in terms of drawing people out of their apartments, getting them down here, meeting their neighbors, so... Yeah, I just feel like it does check a lot of boxes on any different levels, which is really positive. Um, but the element of the, the youth piece, um, for me, it's kind of like, that may be the most important because of COVID, it's just, it's so hard on youth employment, like for them to get those starter jobs, they're just not around, so I think this is really positive in that direction. So thank you for the vision and the work. I know a lot of work to get to here, so thank you.
You're welcome. And, and I used to live in the grain, so I, so I used to drive by this site for a period of years, and, um, it's a beautiful little park, but it doesn't, there's not that much life there often. You know, there's some people wandering by, but, um, my, my hope is that, and this would probably take maybe thirty-five, forty percent of the, of the square foot area of that park, but I think we could bring a lot of life to that part of, um, of the Seventh Street Garden.
Beautiful spot for a garden.
Councillor Renwick?
Yeah, my sentiment's exactly, I think it's a great spot with the, uh, the, um, elderly down there and all the residents from Amber Bay and Silver Bay and whatever, but, uh, my question to staff is, do we need a motion to get this on the October thirteenth agenda or no? It, it's on? Never mind. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I, yeah, I have a couple of questions. So, um, I like the idea. I think there's a couple of missteps still. I think it'd be really important to have a community consultation.
Correct.
Um, the folks living across the road in, in the Golden Life Building, um, you know, they might have something to say, good or bad. Um, our history of community gardens has been marginal at best, like the Hendrick Street Garden that comes to mind immediately. It, uh, you know, was brought forward similar to what you're doing today, and then, and I noticed you even identified that, that your group would move on.
The, the Youth Climate Corps part of it.
Yeah, would move on, yeah. And it reminds me of the old Katimovic programs that we used to have years ago, right? They're very similar to that. Um, and, uh, so for, for myself, I think, and council, it'd be good if we had, whatever report comes on to the thirteenth meeting, that some of those things are addressed, including what's the commitment from the Nelson Food Cupboard as an example to the ongoing maintenance. Uh, as, the only downside that I see personally is the fence. I really struggle with the fence, to be honest with you. Um, that's a nice spot if you're at the old folks home there and you look out, there's no obstacles to cross the road, and there's a nice view of the mountains, and in some places, the lake and so forth, and I think that'd be good, uh, um, you know, to be good buy-in to that, but I got a feeling if you put a fence up there, which, and I'm, you know, I don't know how the greenhouse is gonna fit either, to be honest with you, but I'm just throwing these things out here because they could bite you a little bit, and I didn't make those notes on my, um, information here, and I, and I think the title, timeline's tight.
It is.
The timeline's quite tight to pull that off, and, uh, you know, I, I like the program. I really wanna see it be successful, but I think there's a few pieces to get there that will be important, none the least of which is, um, you just mentioned you might be coming to the city for funding, and I'm not so sure that, that would fly, but, uh, and that's what the...
C I P.
Yeah, C I P grant or something along those lines, but potential. That, that's what happens with these projects. They're, they're great ideas. They have lots of traction, but when push comes to shove, the guys that build them leave, somebody else has gotta deal with them. It usually ends up being us. It's not in our budget, it's not part of our plan going forward. So, you know, get the community on the side for sure, definitely talk to the folks across the road.
Yeah.
You know, because they wander out there and they, they might, you know...
So it's...
Yeah.
So that is one of our tasks.
Yeah.
We've already got the Youth Climate Corps looped in to do, to help with the c- c- community consultation process in the next two weeks.
Yeah, and please give that fence some consideration, uh...
Well, we, we...
You know, I know that, I know that driving around the area, particularly on the North Shore, people build gardens and put these seven-foot, you know, elk fences around so their garden survives, and, and, uh, I'm not sure that's a very inviting thing at the end of the day, that...
It's, it's a paradox, isn't it? Because, because this year, I, I garden, we have quite a large garden up Sabota Road. In years past, we've had to put the seven-foot fence.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
This year I had a whole section of fence taken, and I didn't have one deer in my garden.
There you go, yeah.
Because I think there's been, um, a decline in deer...
Yeah, there is definitely, you're right, there is.
I, I'd love to not put a fence up there, because, because I'd love to see this be, or, you know, maybe there's a four-foot fence, and, um...
Or maybe none, and try it for a year and see what happens, you know, like...
Drive it.
And it could depend on the results of the community consultation as well.
Because there is lots of gardens in town with no fences.
Yeah.
In residential areas, and even the one at, uh, the, at the Food Cupboard, United Church one. No fence, right on the sidewalk, and nobody's ripped out the vegetables.
So, so I, I, I totally agree with the, with your aesthetic consider, concerns, and I share them. And maybe there's a, there might be a possibility of doing a four-foot high fence that kind of contains the area. And it possibly has, you know, sleeves, like a metal post sleeve, we could put another piece on top if we ever need it. You know, like to add the next layer. I'd love to not need it, and...
Yeah, think about it, you know, I'm just suggesting, because the neighborhood, you know, will have something to say, and, you know, it's, I, I personally think the more open it is, the more inviting it is. But if a fence up, it seems like it belongs to somebody, and it's actually a community garden, right?
Yeah.
And, uh, so, but no, I, the idea is...
The, the fence is just functional in terms of predation from ungulates, and the question, I guess it is, uh, a sixty-four thousand dollar question, is like, do we need it?
Would help with the funding, for sure, if we didn't...
Yeah, would definitely help with the funding, yeah. And it will be on the October, uh, thirteenth, and, but some of that information would be nice to have, Kevin. You know, from the other partners to make sure everybody's inside and, and with your presentations.
So we're, we've, we've consulted with Mountain, it's Mountain View?
Lakeview Village.
So, so they, they've said they'd be happy to, um, you know, to send in a letter of support, I think it was Jeanette down there. Um, we're working on a memorandum of understanding between the Nelson Community Food Center, Seeds and the Youth Climate Corps to kind of articulate how we're all working together. The, the, the idea is that on an ongoing basis, Seeds and the Nelson Community Food Center would co-fund a part-time garden coordinator, so someone to be on-site for twelve hours a week or something like that, who could both manage some of the functions in the greenhouse and make sure that they steward the community garden so that there's not litter there, so it's organized in terms of when people turn their sprinklers on. We're, we're hoping to do it in a way where the synergies between those two organizations are of be, of benefit.
So it was the, it was the Golden Life residents that actually triggered the one that's there now. You know, and they talked to Public Works, and Public Works went down there and snuck in a hose bib, and the next thing you know, there's a yard. Yeah, so it's got a great idea. Um, and I think Heather, with the Seeds program, they were working a lot with the youth in the past. Um, prior to everything that's happened to us now, but they did have a lot of kids come from Hume School, from Gardens, from, um, um, L V, or not L V R, but the junior high school as well, on programs when they were planting and harvesting and so forth, so...
Yeah, and there's potential for this to have that as well.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Great, yeah, thank you. Councillor Page?
Uh, I just walked up, and with, uh, those are some really good points that Mayor Dooley has brought up. Um, along those lines, when we look at this design and think about an elderly person coming out of the manor there and enjoying the space, we have some seating in the volunteer area, but has there been consideration to seating on the other side of the deer fence, near this deer fence? So you can go out into that area and be near the garden, maybe not in the garden, but maybe also within the garden? Uh, there's just spots to rest and, and be and dwell and, and enjoy the life that that, that kind of project would bring to that area.
Definitely. We've got some benches kind of marked here for the middle, um, but that, we could easily put some benches around the outside of the perimeter on the other day.
And, and Heather was talking about some kind of creating somehow artistically a center element, like a, like a place that felt like the center where people could just like you say, sit down or take in the, the experience of being in the garden. Boxes, isn't it?
You can make elaborate...
So, uh, Richard, I...
And, and the existing seating that's there...
You've done a beautiful job. It's a beautiful...
Uh, Richard, thanks, uh, and Heather, thanks very much for taking the time to, to, you know, work with young people to make this happen. Your time is up.
Time's up.
Thank you so much.
So we'll see, uh, we'll probably see on the thirteenth, thirteenth.
Thank you.
Uh, we have the young lady calling in for the next presentation.
Sandy, can you hear us?
Sandy, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Yes, and so Sandy, do you want me to pull up your presentation, or do you want to share your screen?
You know, I've got it here, so i- if it works for you, I'm happy to, to control the slides from this end.
That sounds great.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Mayor and Council for having me tonight. Um, I've also got on the line with me, uh, Dana Hawkins from the Regional District of Central Cootenee, who is the, uh, um, the Regional District of Central Cootenee obviously is the main proponent of this project, so do you have any questions at the end about, um, uh, the, um, you know, the next steps from the Regional District for this project, and then she'll happily answer those for you as well. Uh, just, just to check, can everyone see the, uh, PowerPoint slide in front of them?
Uh, we got a lot of information up there.
We've got our own.
We've got our own, so...
You've got your own, okay.
Get you big here, like get you on the screen.
Sandy, could I ask you if your PowerPoint's the one you're showing is the one you sent to us?
It's exactly the same, yeah.
Okay, good, okay. Just in case we lose you for some reason.
No, no problem.
Sandy, do you have two monitors?
I do, yeah.
You might be seeing your work monitor, not your presentation monitor.
Hold on.
Thank goodness that we have Keith. If it not been for Councillor Page at the U B C M, none of us would have been able to participate.
Yeah, note that in the public, uh, council always needs Paige. I T support.
How does that, does that work better?
That's great.
Now you got it.
Perfect.
Say, you know, fortune pays. No charge.
All right, perfect. So I'll just launch into it. Uh, I appreciate you've got a busy agenda and that it's already uh, been a, a lot of delegations tonight, so I'll try to run through this as quickly as possible. Um, a few of your council members and your staff have already, you know, a much longer version of this presentation, so uh, if you do have specific questions, I can answer them at the end, or, uh, your staff, uh, have a really good understanding of a lot of this information, so they should be able to walk you through the, the finer points of the presentation. Uh, my name is Sandy Mackey, I'm the Housing Research and Policy Lead at McCullough Development Services, and our company, along with our partners at the, a company called Turner Draken Partners Limited, were the key consultants on this project, uh, that was undertaken by the Regional District and its partner communities. Uh, briefly, tonight I'll walk you through a bit about the project and the report. We'll discuss some of the key findings, a few of the next steps that we still have left to do, and then I'll, I'll open the floor for any questions or discussion you've got about the, uh, the Housing Needs Report process. And then I'll, I'll open the floor for any questions or discussion you've got about the, uh, the Housing Needs Report Process. So a bit about the project, uh, as I said, it's a partnership between the Regional District and the eight municipalities within the Regional District's border. Uh, unfortunately, Castlegar has already done their, um, housing needs assessments, they're not included in this study, but, uh, Nelson, along with Creston, Caslow. McCusp, New Denver, Salmo, Silverton and Slokan are all involved, uh, as well as all of the electoral areas. Uh, as of right now, it is the, as far as we can tell, it's the, uh, largest regional housing needs assessment undertaken. Under this UBCM funding program, uh, both in terms of the physical area we had to cover, as well as the number of different entities we had to, to cover. Um, and in consultation with staff at the Regional District, we decided that the best way to approach, uh, sharing the data. Was in, um, subregions, so, uh, what you'll be seeing in your report for the Greater Nelson and Western Kootenay Lake subregion. Is the specific information for the city of Nelson, as well as electoral area E and electoral area F. Um, something that we've, you know, in doing a lot of these assessments, we know that, you know, housing issues are not. Uh, they don't respect municipal borders and, um, things that are happening in the city of Nelson are spilling into places like electoral area E. And electoral area F, so when you make decisions about land use and things like that, it's important to consider, um, housing as a region rather than just as an individual entity. So, uh, in the report, you'll see your data as well as the data of your neighbors. Um, firstly, I will remind you that, you know, this Housing Needs Report process is, is responding directly to legislation and recommendations. Uh, reg- legislation and regulations that require all local governments to, um, conduct a housing needs report and then publish those housing needs reports. On their websites, um, your first round had to be completed by April twenty twenty-two, so you're well underneath that timeline. And funding for this project was available for, uh, through the UBCM, uh, funding stream. Uh, one thing to, to re- to remember though is that, you know, this is not a one-time thing, uh, the legislation requires that you complete. Another housing needs report every five years, um, so it's going to become a foundational policy document for you and, and certainly will inform. You know, your OCP and any other, um, housing-related work that you conduct as a city. Our suggestion is, uh, rather than waiting five years, that you aim to do your next housing needs report sometime in, uh, winter of twenty twenty-two. Twenty twenty-three, that's about when we'll see the, uh, next housing needs report. Uh, or the next census data relief, that's a really good way to get sort of on the census timing and then go for five years every, uh, five years after. So the report contains, you know, lo- information on local and regional information, demographics, household incomes. Um, but one thing it doesn't contain is where new housing should go or the former density it should take. Those are the types of decisions you need to make as a local government through your OCP or through zoning bylaw updates, et cetera. What we've given you is the what and the who, it's up to you to figure out the how. Uh, the process went from January of this year to September, uh, we, through our engagement, we engaged with approximately seven hundred community members and organizations. And collected data from a variety of different sources, including Statistics Canada, the Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation and many, many others. Uh, Nelson is lucky in that it's the largest municipality in the study area, which means it actually has the most rigorous, uh, data available to it, so. You'll see a lot of stuff in your subregion that maybe wasn't necessarily available to some of your neighboring communities. And the last piece on this section is, uh, the report has four key components, the first is a, a regional report that goes over broad regional trends. It's the document that has the best sort of integration of engagement feedback with the actual, um, quantitative data. It's sort of the place I would suggest you start if you just want a high-level executive summary about the study. The second piece is your sub regional report, which pairs you with electoral areas E and F, that's got more in-depth information about your actual housing market. Uh, the third thing is the community summary infographic, you've received a highly visual, um, infographic summary. Of the data findings from your community and that's specific to the city of Nelson. And then the last piece is an engagement summary report, that's, I, I would encourage you, if you are interested in, uh, the lived experience in your community. We've incorporated pieces from that and all the other reports, but, um, that is kind of the com- uh, compositorium of all different engagement feedback. That we received and it's a really moving document. So on to the key findings, and I know there's a lot of, uh, depth here, so I'll just try to run through it, uh, relatively quickly and. If you want to return to something and get some more specific information, we can do that. So the first finding, obviously, and anyone who, you know, lives in Nelson will, will understand this implicitly, your community is growing and it's aging. We're seeing, uh, we're expecting in twenty twenty-five that you'll have a population of close to twelve thousand people. Uh, about twenty-six percent of whom will be above the age of sixty-five. That's compared to, uh, the two thousand six population of about ninety-five hundred with only a fourteen percent of your community over the age of sixty-five. So, growth is occurring, but it's not occurring equally across all different age cohorts. And, uh, a growth in your senior population has implications on the type of housing you need to be thinking about providing. Um, along with an aging population, we're also seeing your household sizes are declining, uh, that is something that we see in all, most jurisdictions with an aging population. And, um, folks move from maybe a three-person home into a two-person home and then, uh, as one member of a couple maybe needs specialized supports. Or unfortunately passes, um, we're seeing household sizes in, uh, decrease, which means more units are required for less people. So in two thousand and twenty-five, we're expecting you to have again about twelve thousand people, but need about fifty-nine hundred housing units. That's an increase of thirteen percent since two thousand sixteen, whereas your population's only expected to decrease, increase eight percent. Um, one thing to consider too is that it's not just your growing senior population that leads to this, it's also changing family types and compositions, so. Seeing a lot more, um, uh, like sort of two household families where the, the parents may be split up and taking care of children from two different households. And other sort of things where, where, uh, more households are required for le- uh, less people. One of the key things that emerged in your community and across the region is that rental housing is becoming increasing, increasingly expensive. And very hard to find, uh, median rents were generally stable until about two thousand sixteen, but have increased pretty dramatically since then. Um, two bedrooms are up almost twenty-three percent in the Nelson market, uh, and the total rental prices are up about twelve percent. Uh, and vacancy is very, very low, at times your vacancy rate has been zero, uh, right now it's hovering around point four percent. Healthy vacancy rate is often in the sort of three to five percent and even higher range, some people would consider a healthy vacancy rate in the five to seven percent range. So your vacancy rates are incredibly low, um, and when I show you this rental price data, there's a couple of things you need to know. First and foremost, uh, for a lot of you, you'll look at this and you'll see a three-bedroom unit at eleven hundred dollars, that would be a great deal in Nelson. Um, and that's because these prices are from the primary rental market, which is made up of typically purpose-built rental units. That have more than five units in a building, that's the only way that the Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation can track rental housing. And so what you're seeing here is the combined prices of all of those units, those are, so that means that there are some units on the market. But a lot of them have been lived in for ten, fifteen or even twenty years and they are, they sort of depress the price that you're seeing here. Uh, when we do a secondary market scan or when, uh, agencies in your community like Nelson Cares do a secondary market scan. They found that these, uh, CMHC prices can underestimate, uh, what people would expect to be paying on the open market by. You know, sometimes as much as fifty percent, uh, in other communities that I've looked at, it has, um, for some certain types of units, like three-plus bedrooms especially. Um, it can underestimate people pay by more than a hundred percent, so it's, uh, really important to note that, you know. We clarified that in the study a lot and we do include some secondary rental prices for you. Um, but, uh, yeah, this definitely under-represents what you're seeing and it's more pointing at a trend, which is that, you know, rental housing is more expensive. And certainly harder to find. And not only is it harder to find, we're also seeing that the number is decreasing across nearly all age cohorts, but especially in, uh. Uh, families, households with young children and in, uh, younger parent families, so that's what you're seeing here in the sort of zero to four. And, uh, or sort of zero to twenty-year-old categories, where we're seeing higher rates of rentership in two thousand sixteen than in two thousand six. We're also seeing it in, uh, for sort of the thirty-five to fifty-year-old range, which are typically going to be the parents of these younger children. Something that you might notice is that, uh, rental rates are decreasing for folks in the sort of twenty to thirty-year age range. And, um, you know, we're not a hundred percent sure on that, but anecdotally, we suspect it's because, uh, young people are living at home more often. And so are moving into the rental market later. Um, a big thing to think about when you're looking at, uh, you know, how rental housing and renters, uh, navigate housing in your community is this. Uh, median incomes for both owners and renters, owners in your community tend to earn, you know, just a little under seventy thousand dollars per year. Whereas renter households earn about half of that, close to, uh, thirty-seven thousand dollars per year. And that's not uncommon, that's pretty similar in, in most jurisdictions, but that gap means that renters are, uh. You're seeing more and more renters in your community and renters are less and less likely to be able to meet their needs because their incomes are low and because. Um, housing is becoming more expensive.
Sandy, it's councillor Page here before you like move on.
Sure.
That renter household median income, are you capturing a situation where there might be roommates splitting a two-bedroom or? Is that individual people?
So it's actually both. Um, this is done through S- uh, Statistics Canada's sort of tenure calculation, um. So a renter would be someone who is either A and a, they're, they're households, right, so. A renter household would be, uh, either an individual who's living maybe with a roommate, they would still be captured as. Uh, oh wait, maybe I'm getting that wrong. I'll have to look that up for you, I believe that, that could include. Because there's, I'm thinking of the difference between family type, where you have non-senses families and actual household calculations. Um. I will look that up and, uh, get back to you, I think, on that one. Because it's kind of complicated, so I, I will confirm for you and, uh, and get back to you.
Can I just, um, ask, how about, we have a pretty high student population?
Yep.
That would capture, you know, some student that has not a lot of income and is renting and has student loans or.
Yeah, that's a really interesting question, so, um, it depends on. Typically, students would fill out the census in their home jurisdiction, so students that travel to Nelson for school. Especially within the country are more likely to fill it out in their home community. Um, however, you do have a lot of, uh, students who maybe are moving here semi-permanently, in which case they would be filling it out. As if they live in Nelson permanently, so it's a bit of both and it tends to vary based on how rigorous. The census collectors are in that given census year and that's something we really can't control for. So if you get a really rigorous census year where they go to every single college dorm and they knock on every single door and they get folks to fill out the census. Then you're going to have a higher population of students represented, if they just, uh, send it to you at your, you know, your parents' house. Then you're likely not to have a high number of students represented, so it really is dependent. Uh, I would say that the numbers of students though high for a community your size don't tend to impact, um, these numbers substantially. Um, the rental, the difference between renter and owners is, is pretty common across not only communities your size, but about all communities in British Columbia, so. You're not sort of alone in this and, uh, I don't think that necessarily students would account for a huge proportion of that difference.
And, and just to be clear, according to, uh, various statistics that I just looked up, it does include everybody in the household.
Perfect, okay, so it's the whole household. Yeah. So if, if it's four folks in, living in a, in one rental household, the median income would capture all four of their units, their incomes combined. Um, so fifty percent of renters make more than this and fifty percent make less, or renter households. But it's not just renters in Nelson, um, your owner-occupied housing is also getting expensive. Similarly, median house prices were stable until about twenty fifteen, uh, but prices have definitely escalated, especially in. The sort of denser, ground-oriented housing types, so you can see that your single-detached, semi-detached and row houses, uh, both are priced. Uh, s- uh, around the same right now, semi-detached and rows have increased fairly substantially at forty-one and seventy-three percent since two thousand ten. That's because you've got much less stock in those types of units and those units are newer, so they're going at a higher price. Your full, single-detached stock is much more diverse, right, so the new ones that come online that sell for a lot. Are balanced out by the ones that don't, are older and don't sell for as much, however, twenty-two percent is still quite a large increase. And anecdotally, we've, uh, w- we've heard from a number of folks that they expect those numbers to go up. As, um, wealthier folks from higher purchasing power jurisdictions and municipalities. Uh, more and more begin to value the sort of small and, uh, lifestyle-oriented, um, communities like Nelson. So, yeah, it's both owners and renters and there's concern that people are being pushed out of expensive markets, we're seeing increased instances of things like hidden homelessness and usage of food banks. And a big thing we're seeing is people reentering farther away from services and commuting further, one of the advantages of doing this as a region is that we can capture engagement data. From folks who maybe used to live in Nelson and have had to move away because of housing issues and that was definitely something that we heard. Um, a couple of quotes here from just really meaningful and impactful and directly integrating, uh, directly, you know, talking about Nelson. "I can't afford to buy or rent anything in or around the area, which is really sad because I am a third generation Nelsonite and I can't afford to live here anymore." And the second one in a similar vein, "I love Nelson, I've lived here for over ten years, but with it being such a struggle to find affordable renters, I'm not sure I can stay and it's breaking my heart." So these aren't folks that are new to your community, these folks who have lived here for a long time, they're valued community members and they're really struggling to find housing in your. Um, I'll talk a bit here at the end about core housing need, so we, we talked about core housing need, it's sort of a mashup statistic. It's a partnership between Statistics Canada and the Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation. And it looks at households that are spending more than thirty percent of their before-tax income on shelter. And have, uh, a house or have a house that is, um, inappropriate and it doesn't have the right number of bedrooms for them. Or it's in need of major repairs, so if you're in any one of those three circumstances, you're considered in core housing need. Um, across Nelson, sixteen percent of all of your households were in core housing need, seven point seven percent of owners. And almost a third of your renters, um, we break down those three different, um, housing need criteria individually in the reports. Uh, but renters overwhelmingly are in that situation because of an unaffordable housing circumstance. We also talk about extreme core housing need, which is, takes that thirty percent figure and it bumps it up to fifty percent. Um, that fifty percent figure means that, uh, folks in extreme core housing need are one unexpected expense. Away from potential homelessness, they, uh, are a car repair away from having to decide whether or not to pay their rent or purchase food that month. Or their one unexpected heat bill from having to maybe visit the food bank. Um, across Nelson, only about four percent of owners are in extreme core housing need, but fifteen percent of renters are in extreme core housing. These rates, there are some good news, these rates do represent a decrease from two thousand six, but, uh, given the, uh, information we've received. Across all of the engagement, uh, platforms, we feel like this is likely to increase in the next census period. Uh, and then the last couple of things about some of the surveys, uh, we found that across Nelson, across the Regional District, twenty-two percent of all of our survey respondents. Indicated they were considering moving out of their community due to housing issues, that number was much higher, forty-six percent for renter respondents. Which is really concerning and that could have meant moving to another community in your region or moving out of your region entirely. Again, highlighting need for more dedicated, affordable and appropriate rental options and, um, a lot of these folks were seniors as well, right? So thinking about the supports that older residents need. Uh, we also saw a pretty extreme need for more non-market supportive and emergency housing options. You've currently got substantial waitlists in Nelson and as of the last count, there were a hundred and one people experiencing homelessness, seventy-two percent of whom were unhoused. Um, and I can't tell you the number of people I saw who, in the surveys, who were reporting just a general sense of, of housing anxiety. Um, lots of people talking about being afraid constantly of being evicted, um, not being able to provide just basic. Um, quality of life things for their children, um, or working full-time plus part-time, uh, but still having to live in their car. Or, you know, deal with mold or a leaky roof. So this for me highlights a real, specific need for non-market housing that is affordable and affordable in perpetuity, we often refer to that as secured affordable housing. And it's not only on the local government, right, I think that means that there needs to be an increased funding from senior government, the provincial and federal levels. And a big piece of that is, is supporting nonprofit-operated housing however you can, um, different communities are looking at different ways, but. A couple of things you can look at in Nelson are to, you know, educate your community, reduce stigma around those supported uses. Um, potentially looking at encouraging, uh, or at allowing supported uses in all zones. Um, a big piece is a land acquisition disposal strategy, which I think you actually have sort of something in the works for that, so that, that's really good. Um, and then prioritizing your nonprofit development applications, either by, you know, taking it from the bottom of the pile and your planning. Um, and then prioritizing your nonprofit development applications, either by, you know, taking it from the bottom of the pile and your planning department. And putting them right at the top to help them meet really ten, uh, tight funding deadlines. Or by, you know, prioritizing things like, uh, deferring property tax or, you know, uh, making agreements. Where they don't have to pay for CACs and I think you do a lot of that already, but, um, sort of doubling down on those uses is is a good practice that we're seeing from a lot of different communities. And then I wanted to share the last couple of things, which is just housing in twenty twenty five. Um, what we're seeing up here is the total number of units that you're expected to need in twenty five, in twenty twenty five. Um, this is an underrepresentation of what your actual need looks like. It's meant to convey that given your expected increase in population, you will need approximately this many units to make, to keep up with that demand. Um, so you're seeing, uh, you'll probably need about sixty five. Uh, you're, you're, you'll be in a deficit of about sixty studio or bachelor units, you'll be in a deficit of about thirty one bedroom units. And about fifteen three bedroom units, you'll actually have quite a number of, uh, two bedroom units that, you know, maybe won't be required by the market. Um, but again, like this is what, if you just built these units, you would be in a, the same and probably worse situation you're in now. So overbuilding these, these benchmarks is really important and using these as sort of, uh, goalposts to shoot past rather than things to shoot for. And that's it for the, the, the findings from the report. Again, it contains the what and the who, but you know, determining the how is up to you. I will highlight again, there's, you know, really broad consensus across your region on the needs. And a, a great and committed community of nonprofits who are willing to act. And I think there's some really, uh, powerful partnerships that can be formed and and continue to support them like you already do. Um, and you know, before I leave you, I will just say thanks again to everyone who participated in the study. And a special thanks to, uh, staff and, um, those of you who have attended these presentations in the past. For us supporting the project from the very beginning. Uh, and if you've got any questions at all, I'm, I'm happy to return to a few slides or. Um, or even just leave it with you if you need some time to digest and you'd be welcome to reach out to me, uh, later on in the process.
Council Woodward.
Hi Sandy, it's Counselor Woodward.
Hi Counselor Woodward.
Um, so I, I was looking at, uh, we just had, um, a presentation today about, uh. Tax exemption on, um, social housing. And I was wondering, um. You know, it's, uh, I was saying earlier that it was one of the few ways that we can kind of actually affect affordability in the town by helping out. Our local community groups get these houses built and then helping them with the taxes is, is, is a way to keep the, the rents, uh, low. Of artificially in a way, um, because they're promising to pass on those savings. Um, do you, do you think there are, is there other tools that you feel like we could apply? Like if, like there was a top three tools a city could apply to affect affordability in the town, what, what would your, uh, suggestions be?
Wow, um, I mean. There are, you know, to be, to be quite frank, the tools at the local level are. You have a lot of power, but it's, it's not enough, right? Like the, the true power to address housing affordability rests with the province and the federal government. But there are a lot of different steps that you can take and I think a really big piece of it is, is exactly what you described. Uh, putting together incentive packages and assistance packages for nonprofits that are committed to building and maintaining. Secured affordable housing in your communities. Um, and you can put together, uh, different, um, you know, benchmarks that they have to meet. Almost all of them will meet and surpass your benchmarks if they're receiving funding through an organization like B C Housing. Um, but big pieces that you can do are definitely that waiver of property tax, that's a huge one. That can, um, I did it for a, a project we're working on here at McColo, we did sort of an affordability analysis of. Uh, a municipality waiving, um, property tax for a year and how much that decreased the amount of rent per unit. And it was basically the difference between someone paying, um, thirty percent of their income on rent. And, um, something like, and about two hundred dollars more a month, which put them into that certain thirty five to forty percent, right? So it was the difference between them being in core housing need and not being in core housing need. So that was, that was a huge one that we, we found has a direct impact. Um, other things that you can do are, you know, waiver of CACs, so community amenity contributions. You can also put together, uh, grant programs if you, if you prefer not to waive community amenity contributions or development permitting fees. You can put together a grant program wherein the nonprofit would be eligible for basically an offsetting amount of grant money. Um, just depending on how you prefer to do it. But, you know, we tend to break down municipal tools into sort of five key categories. Uh, the first is regulate and incentivize, so those are the ones that we're the most familiar with as planners. Regulate means putting rules in your O C P and in your affordable housing strategy and things like that that make it easier to build affordable housing. Uh, incentivize is those things that make it cheaper or make it, um, more financially feasible to build affordable housing. And then the other pieces are, um, to advocate upwards to provincial and federal authorities. For increased funding and direct supports for the provision of affordable housing. Um, and, uh, the other big one is to educate your community members. So, you know, educating yourselves as, as counselors and as staff is really important, but then passing on that learning to your community members. And trying to head off the, the stigma around supported and affordable uses. Um, one thing I tried to make abundantly clear in this presentation is that, you know, it's not just the folks who are visibly unhoused. That are struggling in your community, it's pretty much anyone making the median income or less. Um, which is fifty percent of your community, right? Is struggling to find appropriate housing through the market, so, um. Those education pieces are incredibly vital to making it much easier for folks to build affordable housing in your communities. Sorry, I know that's a three, but.
No, that's, that's great, those are, those are really, uh, good, good, good suggestions and, uh. I think, you know, with this report, it really is quite clear kind of where we, what we need to do, so thank you very much for your work.
Anytime.
Council Page.
Thanks Mayor, um, I wanted to start off and just acknowledge and thank Counselor Woodward. For taking the lead on ensuring that the City of Nelson was participating in this. I think this is accumulation of you taking an initiative and making sure that the tables were talking, that this happened. This is a really important report and I just want to make sure we acknowledge that because it's a big piece of it. One of the things I heard in here, I think this question's more directed towards staff. Is, and you highlighted a few times at the beginning there, is the need to do an update before we hit that five year anniversary. I think that's a really important key role for us as government is to make sure this data exists and that people can draw upon it. So what can we do to ensure that before we have the next election, move on to whatever is happening after that? That, that the wheels are in motion to get a two year or a three year update on, on something like this. So that we're not waiting to five and maybe five gets forgotten and it becomes, well. Now it is, yeah.
Uh, well, you can put it as a strategic goal. But your next council ultimately will make that decision whether they agree or not. But putting it in your climbing helps. As part of that, that strategy. But ultimately, yeah, to that next council if they want to. I don't know how, you know, the fact that we didn't get funded for this, um. You know, I, I assume we're eligible for funding still through U B C M. Um, so, so there might be money available to us, um, before the five years. Assume those, the R D C K got the funding for this and for those, all those other communities. So I assume they will have to wait for five years to get more funding, but the fact that we didn't get funding. I assume we are still eligible for funding.
And just one simple note, so I guess the secondary question on this is. And I, I want to hear Sandy's point at the end of that presentation of like, this is, we've got the report, now it's time to figure out the how or the action. So do we want to refer this to our steering committee at the end of the month, end of October? To have a discussion with staff or is staff going to look at this report and come back with some recommendations? Like what, what are our key concrete actions that staff is going to take with this report now?
Yeah, sorry, I haven't read through this and I'm not sure how much that reflects of what we are doing. Um, for example, this housing in twenty twenty five is, is that need after we've built these hundred and fifty units that we're building now or before?
Uh, I can touch on that, so we did have, uh, building, uh, demolition, historic building demolition and permitting data. So that, those numbers should account for any permits that have already been issued. Or that we're just giving, we requested the data, I believe, sort of six or so months ago.
So we're, we've been funded for, you know, three, um, and looking at one more affordable housing project. So I think it's a hundred and fifty units overall, so anyway, we just need to clarify that. And I guess, I don't know, Alex, maybe you know, um, cause we've been, you know, as far as the. Most progressive, uh, secondary suite policy in the, probably in the province. Lanyway, you know, most, uh, progressive, how many units you could build on a, on a single family lot. Um, or, um, what are density, um, um, zoning allows, you know. We have all, I think we have most of those tools that it's not about our, our, um, zoning. That's preventing, uh, these units, it's, it's, you know, the market isn't building. You know, we're, we're just in the process of, of looking at a potential building on this site and. You know, the building costs, you, you just can't build at market. And it's not that you can have units that someone that has a household income of thirty six thousand.
Right.
Is, is that's just doesn't financially work, so it needs senior levels of government and waiving, you know. Our municipal taxes is, that's not bridging that gap either, so it, it needs funding from the beds in the province. And, you know, fortunately that funding is out there now and we've probably done as, as well or better than. I would say most, uh, communities in, in definitely this area. I would suggest we're doing pretty well, uh, per capita in, in the province. Um, and I think as Sandy said, it's not a City of Nelson only problem, it's a regional problem. You know, what is the suite policy in our surrounding areas, you know, how many suites are those? You know, there, I think there's some risk in our surrounding areas and I'm not sure if that's been built up. When I look at, you know, the mobile home parks that surround us, all those mobile homes are aging and. You know, what happens when those age out? And I don't know how many units are, uh, of mobile homes outside, uh, the, the City of Nelson, but there's a substantial number there. I'd say that's a, a large risk item and I haven't really seen anybody necessarily address that. And Sandy, I don't know if you have, is there, you know, we have a college that has trade programs, you know. You know, a program of how they retrofit, you know, some of these older mobile homes before they lose them. Might be, you know, I think those type of innovative. Projects and how do we, you know, connect the dots and, um, cause it's either senior level of funding, we can do a little bit. Um, we've got all the regulatory pieces I think you, you can do and, um.
Well, it's in that facilitator piece, right? Like, cause we do, like we do on the economic side, it's that finding those connections and bringing them together.
Yeah.
Can we put this on our steering session for the thirtieth to just, one of the things on the list is an action plan flowing from this report? Or discussion with?
Yeah, I think it's more of an action plan and it's probably an update where we are.
Sure. Sure, but we should discuss it as a, as a group.
Yeah, I, I, I'll just respond very quickly to that, Nelson does have probably the most advanced, uh, housing policy environment in the region. I mean, I think it definitely does, so you are doing a lot. Um, uh, as part of the deliverables, we're distributing a, a housing planning and supports document, which I think will be, you know, a little bit repetitive for some of your staff. But there are a few pieces in there that you might find that fit in that regulatory incentivization, uh, field that you might want to implement. So there, there may be a couple of nuggets to pull from there, but definitely Nelson is, you know, it's doing a, a pretty good job for, for all things considered, right? You, you've sort of checked a lot of the regulatory incentive boxes and often the places that, you know, maybe are a little more difficult are those, you know. Um, and where you can get innovative, right? Um, the idea of connecting folks and working in that facilitator role. And then just to go back to that very, very first question, uh, some short term pieces for staff. About the repeatability of this study, uh, tomorrow morning at ten A M, we're hosting a staff training webinar. To actually use a, uh, housing needs report data tool that we've created for you. That should make the process of updating this information in, in five or three years, um, just a little bit easier. So I think some of your staff have already signed up to take that and that is a really easy and concrete sort of piece of learning that can be undertaken as a result of this.
Sandy, can I just ask you on, um, you know, the permissive? Like we have a lot of renters that aren't in, you know, these, um, affordable housing. Nonprofit buildings. I would say more, the majority are in, you know, basement suites, uh, houses.
Eightplexes, fourplexes.
Et cetera, et cetera, um, so. You know, how do you balance the fact that if we give permissive over here? That's been paid by either the owner of that property who's going to pass it on to their vendors. Or we have a lot of seniors that are still in their own houses that are paying and their house prices have gone up substantially. So they're going to be paying, again, paying that permissive tax exemption we've given to someone that actually is in a unit. That was heavily subsidized already to build it. Um, so have, have you heard any creative solutions of that, it just doesn't seem equitable?
Um.
And I know, um, there was a, one of the units, it's the household income you can have is up to seventy seven thousand a year. And a hundred thousand dollars in the bank. And you have a senior over here that's not making anywhere near that amount of money. Has a, a much higher valued property and is now subsidizing someone that's actually making double the income there.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, one thing we've seen be put into a place in a lot of communities is, is housing income limits, which are set every year through B C Housing. They, they generally represent the amount of income that someone sort of in that mid to low income range would earn. I don't know if they set them for the City of Nelson, but, uh, that would be a good thing to look at. And if they don't set them for the City of Nelson, that it, it would not be a problem to find sort of a, a related community that you can sort of pull from. If you just sort of match up median incomes and sort of composition. So that might be an interesting place to look if you're looking for like a dollar figure to set that, um, that sort of permissive level at. Um, but the, the, you know, the true answer is that there's no easy options, right? Um, some communities will reassess that permissive thing every year. Some communities put them in perpetuity until the property is sold and then it's reassessed. Um, yeah, so I mean, to, to be honest, that, that actually seems like a really good piece to be adding into your. Um, sort of next step, your next strategy, whatever that is, even if it's just a, you know, a revisiting of your existing affordable housing strategy. Looking at, uh, best practices for, um, kind of coordinating how you permit. Or, you know, reduce the costs on certain types of uses and units.
So Sandy, a couple of things about this report, thanks very much for doing this. Um, and, uh, what I was really hoping to learn from this, because to be honest with you, you haven't told me anything I don't know. And we haven't heard from a, a number of different people over the years. And what I was really trying to get out of this report was, and thanks, Sarah's going to send me the full report that I, I'll read. But, uh, the challenge that we face here, we keep delivering housing product in Nelson like nobody else does. And yet we are challenged at this council table on a regular basis to do more. So let's give me a, let me just bear with me for a moment. So let's take, let's just take a couple of examples, Lakeside Drive Project and the corner of, um, Hall and Front. Those are premier properties in Nelson. If they went to the private sector, we would get, be getting returns of taxation annually. I'm not sure what the numbers would be, I asked Colin, what is the Hume Hotel pays annually, but I can tell you it's substantial. And now we're asked by these people to give them tax exemption on properties that we have to now. It'll show up on my tax requisition and Genesis tax requisition in Nelson. It'll show up on us to pay that difference. So you're driving my prices up when you're actually given an additional subsidy to subsidize housing.
Yep.
Right? Now, what I was hoping to see here was who's taking the initiative? Right? Now, what I was hoping to see here was who's taking the initiative to deliver some of this product somewhere else? Because there doesn't seem to be any strategy around all the housing that was built in Nelson in all the time that I've been here. And that's a long time that has brought relief to not only the taxpayer, but the renter or somebody looking for affordable housing in Nelson. Because for the most part, a lot of Nelson people have not been able to take advantage of those facilities. People have come from other jurisdictions and taken up our housing stock. And the one, the reason I was excited about the regional housing report, which I've been whining on for fifteen years, is because we are not getting any help from anybody else. And yet in all, we have people lined up in front of us. When we give, when we give exemptions of thirty thousand, forty thousand, fifty thousand, that adds up to a tax number that we have to charge somebody else. And yet those facilities are using the same services as everybody else. Our parks, snow plowing, you name it. And we've bent over backwards, as the city manager said, with small lot sizes, laneway houses, uh, relaxation for suites, for, um, all kinds of different opportunities in our community. And it doesn't seem to make any difference at the end of the day. And it's tiring. It's tiring here at this table to be faced with this situation of a permissive tax exemption. And we're expected to give thirty-five thousand, which will make us feel good politically. We'll all be happy. We've done our good political thing. But we haven't done a damn thing for the housing situation. You know, it doesn't really help at the end, at the end of the day. It's a, it's a political move that, and, and was talked about tonight. The senior levels of government have been letting us down for years on the housing piece. And they would love to offload that to municipalities. As they've done in Ontario, I don't know if you've done any studies in Ontario where the, where the governments in Ontario are responsible for housing. They're giving a check at the beginning of the year, you supply affordable housing, and it's turned into a disaster. And it, it's, it's tiring at this table. And I watched Judy Gatton, uh, was a leader in this community years ago on getting housing in here into our community. Janice, you remember that? In different parts of it. Here we are in twenty-twenty, having the same conversation, being asked the very same questions. And I look around our region and people are writing letters and complaining about a shortage of housing, but nobody else is delivering product. That's hard. And we take prime commercial properties, we put it into housing, that we will be getting hundreds of thousands annually to relieve taxation on the greater community. And now we're being asked to subsidize those sites and get no taxation. It doesn't add up for me. I'm sorry. But that doesn't work for me. Because we're, at the end of the day, this report, I guarantee you, I can walk down that hallway and dig out one down twenty years ago, probably says the same damn thing.
We shovel the streets and we gotta do it every year. For me, this is about accessibility. Like, having a needs report like this on a regular basis allows us to make informed decisions. That whole sixty-five and plus crowd, that, the, the need for the one bedrooms, you pick that out, make some planning decisions around that. And I, I hear your point. Like, we need Casagar, we need Salmo, we need the junction, we need the Salslo Cant, all be coming online at the same time. And so being part of this cohesive study, I think, is going to be critical to figuring out those next actions. But this, this is just the work.
It has to be transferred to, to the region.
Every five years, every ten.
It can't sit on this floor. It, it's not the burden that should sit on the backs of this council. It's, it's not fair that this burden comes to the city of Nelson, to this council chamber, year after year. I've been forty years in Nelson. Alex, you're new into, into planning here. I promise you, you can dig it out thirty-five years ago, the same thing.
But this is the burden, this is the burden that's on the people of Nelson's back.
Nineteen-seventy-two, my wife and I had a subletted apartment to find a place to live, behind the Legion. And we ended up at the Valhalla Apartments, living there for a year and a half before we were able to buy a house. It was exactly the same.
That is not the same.
I'm sorry.
That is completely different.
It's different?
It's, the scale of it has changed drastically.
Oh, it's changed, absolutely. But it, what I'm trying to say here is we're delivering product and we're not making a difference. And we've changed regulations on building, laneway housing, relaxation on suites, and on and on and on. And we're not making the difference because senior levels of government, if they want to subsidize these units, should subsidize the whole thing. That's not the privilege of municipal law.
But John, if we, if we don't, if we don't keep
Working at it.
Working at it. I mean, it just becomes a, well, I think, I was, I was gonna say that if we don't keep working at it, this town will run up against the economic wall of, of not having the workers we need, not having the middle class we need, not having families be able to afford here, not, not having a whole sector of our society, which we consider a super important part of Nelson. We're not a Whistler yet, where it's just the upper crust and the working class. Like, we do have a diverse community here, but I think that's because we keep pounding away at this problem. But if we throw up our hands, it's just going to be a tidal wave and this town will change and will become like an Aspen.
Well, I, I'm not, I, I don't disagree with you. I fully agree with you, in fact. But what I'm saying to you is, we have not been throwing up our hands. And we keep getting these reports, so we need to do more. And what I'm scared of is, that it's starting to fall on the shoulders of, of the municipal government to carry that ball more and more all the time. And it's not a core service that we're mandated to deliver.
So what would be your suggestion?
Pardon?
Like, how, how would we articulate this better?
I think we need more regional partners. We need housing built in places like Caslow, Nakast, New Denver, Casagar Trail in the region. We need a regional approach to housing. And that was, and I know you, you, you talked earlier about getting this program off the ground. The key to this program, in my opinion, will be shared responsibility for housing. And it'll need to happen in other communities. And we're fortunate in Nelson that we've always had a group of people that had the capacity and the knowledge base to find the funding to deliver product. But that knowledge base needs to be transferred to other communities that maybe don't have it, and potentially to the regional district. The regional district is not being asked for a tax exemption, as an example, like we are tonight. We have no control over who's in that unit.
Now, we all, when we give a permissive, it weighs the regional district tax.
Exactly.
Which means somebody else has to pick up the, you know, for the N D C C, somebody else has to pick up the.
So if I'm hearing you, if I'm hearing you correctly, excuse me.
So I, I'm not suggesting for a moment we're not involved.
Right.
But we think giving somebody thirty-five thousand dollars is going to cure the problem. It's not.
I like what Sandy was saying, you know, of that income test.
Yeah.
Because if, you know, given that permissive, when you don't know who's in those units,
Exactly.
what their income levels are, I think is
Well, that's, that's, that was both my questions to both, uh, Nelson shares and Nelson cares, was that to understand that decision matrix, because it seems to me that you do get, run into a risk of, of basing it on income, not looking at equity, and, and having, in the end, somebody who's got, making twenty thousand a year subsidizing somebody who's making seventy thousand a year.
Yes, exactly what you're doing.
But ultimately, though, I agree that this, we need to, I think it sounds like we all agree that something needs to be done, because otherwise we do head down the road of Aspen. And it changes fundamentally the character of this community. But I don't, I, what I'm confused about, John, and maybe you have a, an answer to this, is if we say that this is not a local responsibility, that we shift the responsibility to the province or the feds, that's still a taxpayer, right? And, and if, and if we do shift responsibility to the province or to the fed, they're going to develop national or provincial-wide policy, which will then get downloaded back on to local taxpayers, on, granted on an income-based tax system. But ultimately, with the growth of, of, of equity that we're, all homeowners are experiencing, maybe it's time to start shifting and, and recognizing that that equity has value. I don't know. It's more of a question, but I do want to raise it, that when we, when we get into it, that putting, increasingly putting the burden on income tax and not recognizing that this equity is value. And so something has to be done. I, what I would love to see, you know, off the top of my head, is to see people who are living two to a big two-thousand-square-foot home really take seriously the idea of sharing that home. Like, that's something I think that we need to encourage more and more, that, that if you're, if you're alone in this, you're a senior in a big, big house, time to start sharing it.
Are you talking about?
Yeah.
A strategy that, well, you're an electric student.
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great program.
You, you might have a senior and you have a nursing student. Why can't you match those, right?
Yep.
One of the seniors, and part of that is, you know, like, part of the challenge is actually our rental regulations where, you know, is a senior going to take that risk of getting someone that they can't move from their house?
Yeah, ag- again, systems, but that might be the road to the solution that, that we're talking about. In part, is to develop the systems and controls for allowing that kind of.
So I talked to, just talked to, to Sarah here, but we need to bring somebody in from the rental association to give us an idea of what it's like to be a landlord, so we can get some understanding of what the restrictions are there, or the challenges are, or opportunities are. And we're, we're not hearing that side of the equation. We're, we're sitting here, uh, talking about rental units without actually having any input from anybody other than the social sector. We're not hearing from the private sector. Why isn't a private sector units being built? Why are, is there not more opportunity when the social sector is looking at building rental units, that there isn't a combination of private market units in with the, the social, on the social side? Why, why is there not the top floor of Lakeside being sold at five-hundred thousand dollars apiece? The four units that are on the top floor.
Or the bottom floor of the library being rental tenure.
Well, exactly. I mean, there's all kinds of opportunities to look at combinations that, uh, that I'm not sure are being explored, because each group's in their own sort of, uh, tunnel. The other thing too is, um, the, the sewer and water fees. I'm not sure they work that well. So you can have two people in a house, like you just said, and they rent out to one person, if they have a rental unit, to pay double the sewer and water fees. If it's not conforming, right? But let's say, okay, but think about it for a second. You have two people that maybe had four children that lived in that house for thirty years, over the span of that time. And now you have one renter and suddenly you're paying double the sewer and water fees because you don't have a conforming room.
So we should, um, ask for an action plan that we can spot all those sins in the action, aside of that, that line of, if you guys agree that you want us to do some more work on this stuff.
There's, there's a big picture here.
Oh, no, there's a bunch of more, more dots. As Sandy said, we have more youth. It's not, if you looked at how many bedrooms are vacant in Nelson, I bet you, we don't have a housing shortage.
Yeah.
We probably have the bedrooms.
Well, I think, I think one of the things that was
They're not just, they're not available.
One of the things that was picked out there is that aging population, like, you might think the youth are having a hard time getting into, into housing, but like, by freeing up and having more one bedrooms that people can downsize into, you're freeing up those bigger homes, right? Like, that is kind of, I think that's pretty clear in the report. Um, that those are the kind of planning pieces we want to target, so.
But some of the challenges too, as the mayor noted, is, um, the government controls on rent. That's why you don't see anybody in the market building them. And, uh, again, some of the, the rights, and again, not to say, you know, because you've had abusive landlords, but some of the rights that the tenants have, people say, why would I have a tenant and I can go to short-term rental, right? I mean, those are the, those are some of the things that go on that, that really do change up what's available. If you, um, it'd be interesting to even to know with doing this report and with COVID and all of the units, actually, that came online, we had a bit of a splurge there for a while, or I think we had some vacancy. Uh, because people had started to change in their short-term rentals because they couldn't have people in them. And that changed over for a bit. But, like I said, sometimes, uh, you know, people are against the market, but the market will, will deal with things in its own way. Um, but government intervention has its own negative back effects on, on how those things are dealt with and built for housing.
Could I ask one more question of you, Sandy? Um, are you presenting this to all local governments?
Well, actually, right now, it's just, it's just you folks. You're the only ones who specifically requested it. So we did do that. But we did present at the regional board. So, yeah, representatives of every local government have seen this report.
And we had it on the Friday. We had the regional district, and then again on Friday. You did it on Friday at the Prestige, twice.
I just think something to keep in mind is, I think we're probably about five years away from the average house price in Nelson being a million dollars. And are very close to it. And I just, it's something to, it's daunting. And I don't know, you know, I don't think we have the, all the answers here that, at the table, but it, it's, it's going to be the future of our town we're talking about here in terms of the kind of community that we're going to have. And a million-dollar homes are, is a certain kind of community. So.
Yeah, what I'm looking for, Councilman, uh, Woodwork, is some solutions, some other than, other than the taxpayer.
No, I hear you. I just think that it's something.
Sixty thousand dollars ain't going to cut it.
No.
And we had the, we had the per-door fee for new, new development. And what did we collect?
Two hundred.
About three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. We put back in housing. Here we are, ten years later, same problem, right? There's, there's no simple solutions to this.
No.
The reason it's income tax, like, property taxes were never meant to find even the services we're providing now, not alone, housing, which is, there's a, we should find that there's a great, um, little presentation made by, I think it was the C E O in Port Moody or somewhere, and, and they basically showed, um, Port Moody gives land, builds this, I can't even remember what it was. And they showed the, um, what the tax break down was. And I think the municipality ended up with five percent after, you know, doing all that work. And they ended up with five, the feds ended up with, you know, whatever, sixty in the, in the province, forty-five. And, and yeah, we are definitely on the, the end of it. You've got sales tax, you've got G S T, you've got, all those taxes are being collected not by us.
That's the difference, P S T, G S T, you name it.
Well, I think it's some, it's a problem to continue working and we'll, we'll review it when we sit down and talk about strategic priority settings. And it is, I agree with you, it's a regional, you're, we're not gonna solve the problem within the boundary of the city while ignoring Blue It or Salmo or the Jerks or the Junction. So we do have to take a regional approach to it. But having this data, making sure we're laying it down to be updated quickly and regularly going forward is going to help inform our decisions. We're not fumbling around in the dark or letting the market bumble around, knocking things over and ruining our fine china in our fancy little town where we have a wide income spread and a lot of dorky, weird, diverse people that we love and we want to keep here.
Thank you. All right, onward and upward. Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thanks, all. It was a pleasure.
You do. Thanks, Sandy.
We have a, next up is the overview of the transit. Is
Do you want to take five?
Yeah, take five.
Wait, almost.
Sandy, we're, we're gonna sign off then, I think, with you. Have a good night. Thank you.
B C Transit had to, um, uh, s- stop, uh, coming and presenting, which is unfortunate, but, uh, I think we've done a lot of good work. And I'm gonna ask Alex probably to, if you could drive the slides from your position, that would be great.
Okay.
So if you go to the first one, uh, just kind of giving us an overview and, uh, and the objective of today's presentation. Uh, just to give you an update on the results, we've had, uh, a working committee going on. Um, and we'll talk about some of those as far as designs, other places for, uh, stops and, um, options. Uh, here, we want to also talk about, go back a bit and just kind of explain how we got here and how we ended up, uh, on Victoria Street. Uh, there's some, you know, B C Transit telling us why the exchange is needed. Uh, there are some funding opportunities, which I think are great, uh, because it really benefits the, the municipalities here based on the federal and provincial government. And, uh, obviously, uh, one of our big things is sort of next steps, uh, that we'll need council's assistance on as we, as we are at that stage. I'll turn the next couple of slides over to, uh, Mr. Toon.
All right. Thank you. Um, I'm gonna be a bit of the historian here in terms of, um, so why some of these locations have been chosen. Uh, you can ignore the word parking on this slide. I think parking literally finds itself everywhere. And it, somehow the word parking got into the slide. The, uh, downtown urban design strategy from just a few years ago, uh, is, um, is the source of, um, the location for, uh, the three-hundred block of Victoria Street, um, being, uh, the proposed, um, location for the new transit exchange. Um, it was a key recommendation of the strategy. The strategy, of course, looked at the downtown as a whole. Um, I'll get into a little bit about, you know, why Warden Baker is, is no longer preferred. Um, and Mr. McClure will have other points on that as well too later on. Uh, but, uh, just as a reminder in terms of the engagement that, uh, that did take place as part of the strategy. Um, there were some three-hundred people who were involved, a lot of stakeholder groups that were, uh, heavily consulted as part of that. And, um, the, uh, consultation notes from that And um, the uh, consultation notes from that strategy as well to noted strong support for uh, for moving into this location. Because of what this location can offer in terms of not only additional space for buses, but in terms of uh, passenger amenities, bike um, bike parking. Uh, washrooms, um, that sort of thing as well. Um, so why not Ward and Baker? Um, the design strategy, first of all, um, has a, so a whole, you know, vision around that intersection. It's, it's our key central downtown uh, location, uh, intersection. Um, other improvements uh, are slated to happen there at some point. Um, there's also some technical difficulties, for example, with uh, with uh, the wheelchair ramps on buses. Uh, where the bus stop is on Ward Street, it's not flat, like the, the, the spa- uh, stop is at some Baker. Um, and even since that strategy, we have, you know, more and more um, activity happening. We've got a new restaurant there, Broken Hill, with a patio. Um, it's a, just a very, you know, busy loading zone. There's lots of stuff happening here. Um, and uh, not to mention the need for new space for um, for buses. And uh, the lack of amenities that we don't have at our transit exchange, that transit exchanges tend to happen when, tend to have when um, you see a lot more uh, bus usage. So um.
Just the other thing that was happening at that same time was, you know, as we expanded the regional transit. You know, the number of buses that were exchanging there was outgrown what we have. So then you were getting up to the speaker and still were part of Ward Street to try to make that work, which just didn't make sense.
Yeah, yeah. You have the um, your BC Transit, I would say too, if they were here, you know, the, the Caslow Health Connector as well too. That brings seniors twice a week from Caslow down to Trail. Um, there's no washroom facilities. Nelson's the only break. It's a short break. Um, and unless you, you wanna buy a coffee at John Ward and hope that no one else is using the washroom, you're not gonna make your, your trail, your bus connection to Trail. Uh, if your medical appointment. Um, so lots of issues, that's just one of them. Uh, nonetheless, uh, the um, you know, the downtown urban design strategy, as well as BC Transit's um. Uh, consultations as well too, uh, more recently in the past year have, uh, you know, unearthed concerns about only having uh, bus service on Victoria Street. Uh, sort of seniors groups, um, I know have uh, have expressed concern in terms of accessibility in winter. And it's, it's a, it's a little bit uphill. For Nelson centers, it's not a ton, but it is, you're going uphill a bit. Uh, the downtown design, urban design strategy itself talked about uh, potentially having a bus stop at Ward and Victoria. Uh, but that's extremely close to the design, uh, to the proposed uh, transit exchange, a little too close. Um, whereas Josephine and Baker, um, will kinda increase the distance a little bit between the exchange and the bus stop. Um, and from, you know, our work as staff and the, the transit folks down at the yard and working with BC Transit. Josephine and Baker offers uh, you know, good routing options for the buses. Uh, as well as um, minimal interference with uh, you know, with, with businesses that have patios and, and restaurant activity and that sort of thing. Uh, so the Josephine and Baker idea is, is a fairly new one, uh, in response to changing circumstances, but uh, but we feel that it's uh, it's, it's a good one.
Thank you, Mr. Toon. So, uh, just moving on now, we think that council is aware of the West Cootney Transit Committee. And part of that, we've have a West Cootney Transit Future Service Plan, so we look at opportunities for improving uh, the, the service throughout the area. And obviously, we have a public consultation. We look at um, our routing, and this not only includes our regular conventional. But also the handy dart. And uh, out of this is sort of what has driven what we see in the future. Is it going to be a demand for additional buses and for those special buses at additional connections? That's one another, again, another reason why we're needing a new transit exchange. So one of the keys on right now is the fact that there is funding available. So this is under the ICIP, Investment in Canada Infrastructure Program, which again, was secured in the province in twenty eighteen. Now, uh, one of the benefits of this particular model is on eligible expenses. Uh, you have a forty percent coverage from the feds, forty percent from the province, and then twenty percent by the, the, you know, transit uh, group. Is the way I would look at it. So I believe that this would not be something that would be held just by the city of Nelson. But uh, through our AOA and with our partners, we would expect, because their buses are coming in from Caslow and Acospa, et cetera, that they would be part of our, our funding of this. Our twenty percent of the transit exchange. But I just thought it was important uh, for council to be aware that um, that there is funding available. And that's where uh, when we look at our next steps, looking at an option and then starting to make the application to the feds. Uh, to the, to the uh, fundraising provider to see if we can be successful. So this one here, uh, again, transit exchange functional requirements, maybe seems easy, easy to think about, but universally accessible. We want bus shelter and bus bench seating. Uh, we would like to have a better route information and scheduling. We also, uh, lighting is important. And of course, bicycle parking hasn't been a, you know, a big factor, especially with uh, what we're seeing with electric bikes. Uh, and just bikes in our community overall, we need to have more opportunities for those that may be using transit as their next step of mode of transportation. Be able to take their bike, park it, take the bus, come back, pick their bike up and go home. Uh, right now, or one, and one other major thing that we've been talking about is having another public washroom. Uh, especially tied into where the exchange is, considering we have people traveling and sometimes seniors as well. Uh, that are doing a route that is quite lengthy, and there are no washrooms on the bus. I don't know, again, I would assume that most people know that, but they may not. Um, but that, to have a, a, not, yeah, well, and so, and so having a public washroom in this location would, I think, be uh, value. For uh, for the, for the riders. Currently, um, we have about four buses that we can sit at the, at the current exchange. And so as we look forward to our transit plan, we're looking at six, potentially seven, as we look into the future. So the next slide is sort of where we are at in the process, so we've already kind of had that visioning strategic plan. Uh, we've had Watt Consulting, and again, as part of the agenda today, you will have seen a much larger package with much more detail. Talked about uh, the Watt Consulting Group and, and, and them being experts in sort of transit exchanges. And then being able to uh, give you a bit more detail. This is sort of the Coles Notes version with the PowerPoint, PowerPoint presentation. But uh, noticing inside that particular document, if you wanna get to know more, you would be able to read that. So where we're at is here today is kind of that select option project term sheet. We really, uh, at this stage, BC Transit needs to have, uh, you know, our goal here is to present, but then also from there. To provide a um, for the October thirteenth meeting, we would like to get direction from council to, you know, whether they're interested in moving to the next stage. Which would be getting the detailed design, engaging stakeholders and choosing an option. And from that point, you would end up with uh, doing the app, getting the business case to do the application. Most of that work has been done with Watt Consulting. But again, it's that tying and getting that public engagement, stakeholder engagement. Uh, with the plan being that, uh, when we look at it, because of the, now with the province's uh, election that's happening. We see that we would be doing the application in early, if, if we went through this, we would get direction from council. We would start having stakeholder engagement. Now, it looks like more like early November and December, being able to come back with what design is happening. And making that application for the funding, all in likely that June, January, February time period. With approve, you know, with hopefully the idea that we get approval from the grant, sometimes by um, uh, mid to late spring. With the potential of undertaking this project before the construction season. But understanding that if the timelines don't quite fit, then of course, we would do it in the off-season. We would not wanna have this sort of work happening in the middle of our summer. So, in trying to, with BC Transit having the uh, you know, them involve, Ali and I said the Watt and Watt Consultants as well. They came up with a few different design features, but all three had to have some components that we were looking for. Uh, again, uh, a minimal five standard buses. We would like to be able to make sure we had shelters, bike racks, paving and landscaping. The public washroom facility. Uh, we assume here in ours that if we were going in this location, that we would be able to find a little uh, space. Inside the current library building to be able to house the, the drivers themselves. They would have a, and have their own spot to, you know, have a seat. Use the washroom, read a book, have a bit of rest in between breaks. Uh, one of the big pieces on this also is to try to help out with pedestrian traffic. There's some ball bouts you'll notice at corners. Help us to get across uh, Stanley Street there. Uh, you know, opportunity for improved signage and customer information. And I think that overall, this one here kinda caught me, but the alignment with CPTED standards. And I said, okay, I wasn't quite sure what that is. So what that is, is crime prevention through environmental design. So it's really important that uh, that the transit would be pedestrian-oriented lighting, open bus shelters. So people have an escape route from perceived danger. Placement of landscaping of uh, of areas, making sure that everything is highly visible. So again, in case people were wondering what exactly that meant. Yes, Counselor Woodwork.
I'm just thinking like, uh, would there be like a wifi? Free wifi people could use there? Connection?
You know, I'm sure, again, is it, is there potential for that? It could be. We know that Shaw has different locations around town. And so whether or not they would want to put one in for themselves. Um, the city doesn't really provide free wifi. I mean, again, I don't know what happens, whether or not you'll be able to draw on the library's wifi, uh, if, you know, being outside the door there or not. I'm not quite sure, but that's something, something to consider. Yeah.
Yeah, you can, but you would need to know the library code, which would be inside the library and if the library moved, I guess.
What's that?
You can get work saves.
There you go. I just think it's like, you know, we're.
It's, no, it's important.
Everyone's on their phones.
Yeah. Uh, so anyway, just to move on to sort of the options. Option A is what we had, is we have sort of one way. So we would have continuing on from Victoria, that you would, uh, when you come off the highway there, it's one way and it goes through past uh, Thors. And um, El Taco, but we would continue that then instead of doing two-way, option A is saying it would, it would now be one way. Now, you would have a wider sidewalk, so there's some benefits there that, that um, again, you have more pedestrian space. And amenities for the actual signage as well as the shelters. Uh, this one also impacts the parking the least. So you've got, still got all the parking on the whole block on the left-hand side. You'll notice up at the top of those pages, you'll see the bump outs and then the ability to kind of, uh, for pedestrians and/or for the buses, being able to pull out and, and, and turn. It's a key, key component for them to kind of slow down traffic, but also allow them to get their nose out, uh, 'cause it's a difficult corner to turn out of in the best place. Um, one of the challenges there is that it uh, would appear that you would only be able to fit five buses uh, in that space. So you're kind of already maxing out at that time. Uh, and then some would say that it would impact the, you know, the areas down by El Taco as far as the business side. When we switch over to.
Just a second, so, question column if you don't mind. Um, when I look at that drawing that you had up there.
Yes.
Um, what direction are the buses pointing? Are they heading?
They're, they're heading towards Stanley. So they were, so the, so, so the one-way continues. So as you come through up off the highway and you're in one, that first block of Victoria is one-way, you would have now another block of Victoria being one-way until you got to uh, Stanley Street there.
So, could you not have the parking up against the library and police station?
Well, that's where the bus is, Mayor. I don't know if you can see, there's, that's where all the buses are, on option A.
They're little red things, can't see them very well.
Oh, I beg your pardon, I'm on the wrong one here, sorry. Um, yeah, they're up against the library. So you have buses on both sides then? That you're saying?
An option, an option A, you would have buses just on the one side?
Yeah.
And you'd have parking on the, on the, on the other side.
Okay, they're on the library, okay. Because otherwise you'd be impacting those business in the, okay.
Yes. Yeah, so that's option A.
Okay, perfect, yeah.
Challenge with, you know, orders and all this.
Yeah.
Is if you're coming from, you know, the road's wide. Baker Street around Victoria and.
Yeah. So when we, when we go then to uh, option C one, you'll see that we now have uh, maintain, maintaining uh, both. Uh, traffic in both directions. You'll see that there's some parking down at the west end. Uh, you've got buses on either side. The means for a bit of a narrow or sidewalk and. Uh, narrower than option A and narrower uh, when you also consider the fact that there will be some shelters on the, on the actual sidewalk as well. Again, too, on this particular option, you'd have to make sure that you came up, either up or down the street to cross, to get to the other side, to the buses. Uh, this one here eliminates a, most of the parking on this particular street. So when you look at, the next step was option C two, which uh, had, you know, has some popularity. One of the reasons that it does is that it's, it's gotten, got the uh, you know, right now fits five buses. But again, if it in the future, you would have the ability to add more. It has a halfway uh, crosswalk, which again, would be beneficial for those. That are trying to connect with different buses and being able to have a safe space that's marked out to be able to cross the street. Uh, obviously, there's always a concern that if you don't have it, that people will cross it anyway in the middle of the street. But this way, you would have sort of those bump outs, kind of closing the gap and then having it marked with a uh, a crosswalk. Uh, there is also, this also maintains and, and has uh, less impact. It gets some parking and it's less impact on the businesses that are at the west end. Again, one of the things here is that it's uh, same as kind of the C one, is that you've got some narrower sidewalks. Uh, noting that the one on the, what we classify as the pink building, uh, would have more of a canopy over top, uh, that. For standing, it's not necessarily, it's a canopy, it would be nailed to the building sort of idea that would rely pressure. Exactly, yes. So not a standalone sort of bus shelter. Um, so again, to the next slide, uh, basically here, you start looking at the numbers. Uh, we had, they have a few uh, components, whether it's design A, uh, with the washroom is about two point five million. Kind of talks about what our vehicle capacity is at five. Uh, exchange C one is uh, fits seven buses, it's about two point one million. And then the design of C two, uh, with the uh, mid-block crosswalk fitting five to six buses, uh, coming in at one point nine. Uh, again, for, not complete there because some of the costs we deal with. But it, ideally, if this was a, you know, a two million dollar project and those are all eligible costs, you're getting one point six million coming from the grant. And then four hundred thousand dollars would be the local government share. And again, that may be something that we would look out. Uh, potential here to have it put in as a lease fee, so you would pay that off over ten or twenty years, so which has its own um, benefit. Uh, also, we could look at uh, for a portion of ours, using some of our own sidewalk or other utility type funding for some of the, the improvements that are going on. Uh, to be able to pay a one-time chunk and maybe lower that lease fee is. But those are all uh, kind of questions that will be answered uh, down later once we get to detailed design. Uh, this next slide is sort of, again, just the comparison of the, the options. Um, again, they talk about from BC Transit side here, the experts on exchanges, they say option C one and C two score best for transit capacity, flexibility and cost. Option C two is preferred as less impact on adjacent users, i.e. on the west end where the businesses of uh, are. Um, the one thing that they did note though is that option A is the best for passengers, amenities, pedestrian space, and has the least parking impact. So the BC Transit is along the ideas that they would be looking at options A and C two. Um, as a trade-off and/or would be the ones that they would wanna take out to the stakeholders and get uh, feedback from, which would be uh, the, the next choice. And again, this is where we're at, or we'll be coming to council on in October thirteenth, is for, sort of for that next step direction. Uh, for further engagement from BC Transit and the city to engage stakeholders. Uh, this next couple of slides here sort of allow for an opportunity of just pointing out. Uh, what was looked at for keeping some bus stops on Baker Street. The uh, at, trying to look at some of the locations that were in that same Ward and Baker area. Uh, added some complications. And so certainly, BC Transit and staff, uh, and working as, in particular with the fleet. And transit staff of, of the city felt that uh, moving those, those bus stops down to Josephine. Which is only a block from Ward, uh, actually fits better for the buses being able to get in and out. Uh, the one thing they did note is that we would likely need to have a uh, bus uh, priority light on Josephine. As you were heading north, so that would be going from the BCAA side towards Pharmasafe. Uh, in that if it pulled in there, you wouldn't want it to get stuck behind, behind traffic. So what, having a light, which I guess is common for BC Transit, that I don't know what color it goes, um, maybe blue for the bus. Uh, that allows the bus to pull out and to continue on, and then other traffic would then follow the, the green. So that's one of those things that they talked about. And then that would be actually likely required for any of the stops that we have on, on Baker, 'cause you just don't want the bus sitting there. Uh, quite a while, not being able to get out of the traffic, uh, on our busy uh, busy summers and that sort of thing.
On Baker Street location will sur- sure be well lit.
It's a fair point, Counselor.
Money saving, money saving there.
And, and sort of one last one here, as we talk about what does happen with Ward and Baker. I know that uh, Counselor here has seen the rendering of a, you know, multi uh, crossing, you know, kind of a beautification plaza there at Ward and Baker. It's quite beautiful. But even in the main time here, this was maybe a little bit kinda hard to see, but in, in moving the trans from here, we can actually. But even in the main time here, this was maybe a little bit kind of hard to see, but in, in moving the trans from here, we can actually increase parking. So as much as we might lose some parking over on Victoria, uh, being able to go angled, but in particular night near, night near the bottom on the, uh, west side. Of Ward and Baker, you'll notice there's sort of a few dots there and hoping maybe having a bump out, a bit of a concrete. And there to have some more bike racks, like a, like a big area for bike racks and especially with council's direction to. Improve our rideability and or have a location to be able to park your bike that would be out in the open, uh, you know, hopefully, uh, allowing it to be a bit more secure. But this is some of the reimagining of that corner right now, um, again, allowing for some parking. And, uh, I think all the way up on angled and then allowing for some handicapped and as well as bike storage or bike parking as well, yes, councillor.
Um, looking at this design here for Baker and Ward.
Yeah.
I'm noticing people are just kind of walking all over the place.
Yeah, it was one of those.
It was yesterday.
Yeah, you know, you've got all exchange, everyone, everyone, all, all move.
All they're called a scramble.
Yes.
Oh, it's a scramble.
Again, would that be a wise thing for us to do, I don't know, for as far as the, uh, the drawing rendering, but yes, it's, exactly, that was the sort of piece that, uh, uh, and all, all go kind of thing, so yeah, scramble.
The way people walk on Baker Street now anyways?
Pretty much.
That is vomiting.
Yeah, okay.
That's, it's all over the place. The one in downtown Toronto is pretty impressive.
Yeah, cool.
Yeah, it makes sense to me. You know, when you, like now, when you walk across and you're trying to turn and then people don't, pedestrians walk to the red light and.
Yeah.
So Colin, I just wanted to ask you about.
Yes.
If you go back a slide to that alternate Baker Street stops.
Yes.
One of the benefits of the bus stop on, um, Ward. Street was it wasn't taking up any retail window space. It was a, it's a blank concrete wall, sorry.
Where the bus stop is now.
Existing one, right?
There's nothing, there's no windows there.
If you're there, you might as well go to the exchange, you have to walk away.
No, I understand, no, no, I'm not suggesting we stay there.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, when you move them on to Baker, you're now gonna take up loading zones and commercial obstruction to commercial space.
Well, e- except that I.
That be a, would that cause a little heartache or?
Well, I don't think so and that's where again, when you think about the timing of this mayor, a couple of spaces like, especially, especially in particular in that area. Um, you would, you could have loading zone where we've got the bus.
Now.
Yes, right, so you remember those, those ones would not now open up, so you got parking, you've got opportunity, opportunity for that. But remembering that what you would see for a lot of times here mayor would be as the exchange, the buses would sit there for long periods of time.
So not on the.
So when we're talking about this, this is just a bus stop, so your bus would pull in again with that priority light, it would pull off, yeah, should be only a minute or so it would be there.
That's why I just wanna be clear, so.
Yep.
Somebody asked.
Yes, for sure, no, it's great questions.
Yeah, exactly. No, exactly.
Having them on Baker is.
Yeah, good point, yeah.
Yep, uh, okay, so recommendation, recommending, nation, recommendation for next steps, recommended next steps, yeah, okay. So, uh, council, uh, coming here. For the October thirteenth would be sort of R F D, looking for council's direction to move to the next steps on this particular, uh, exchange project. This allows B C Transit to start to develop the business case, allows them to get out, um, and start doing the. Again, stakeholder engagement to kind of make a choice and to be able to get to the next stage of, uh, detailed design, which of course. Will let them finish up the application to the I C I P funding, so. That's where we're at for today, uh, and then except again to coming back on October thirteenth, I don't know if council has any questions about this. But that would be, uh, the next goal would be on the thirteenth when we come and meet, that we would get that resolution from council to move forward. Council Woodward, oh, sorry, I just.
One question before we get to.
Oh, sorry.
Um, so being that this is a regional transportation network.
Yes.
Would there be funding that would come in from?
Yeah, and so that's a great question mayor and that was one of the things I talked about with B C Transit was the. Idea that yes, Nelson would be here and it's an exchange for all parties, um, I looked at a number, I've been talking with B C Transit just. For understanding what levers the city would have if we had partners that wanted to use it. Not want to help fund it, because I think that would be key important, especially when I think about the cost being eighty percent covered, but mostly eighty percent covered by. Grants, that that remaining twenty percent, it would, it would certainly seem, um, fair and reasonable, uh, that's not always what happens. And so when we, you know, you could look at options, but we, as I talked about B C Transit, you would say this would be subject to, uh, you know. Uh, getting that partnership with inside our A O A and, uh, again, some of, there's some other things that they've shown me, uh, as an example where. Uh, you know, you would have the right to be able to say, if you're not part of the funding, then you can't kind of have your bus here, so maybe you have to drop off somewhere and. Else, I mean, you wouldn't wanna get there, but there are some other pieces, you're, you're, again, certainly their hope and again, they talked about B C Transit then to talk about. How they have the relationship, uh, with the transit kind of, you know, committee in Victoria and how they sort of. A transit commission in Victoria where they come together and they have operating agreements as well, because this is something that's needing, going to be, need to be cleaned and that sort of thing, so this is. Sort of the capital cost is one component that we wanna have funding for, but there's also going to be the cleaning of the washroom, the cleaning of the bus stops, the cleaning of. That sort of piece that should have a, an operating agreement that again, should be part of our A O A, which is all part of our partners, uh, regional district and the city.
I just noticed the last couple of weeks on the north shore and the south shore, a number of the bus stops are now being upgraded. With shelters and asphalt.
Yep.
Uh, and that's being done by the province, uh.
There, there, there's definitely been a. Yes, there's been some great, uh, partnerships with, uh, M O T I and bus shelters, uh, not just here, but we've been successful in the Cootneys. In, in working with our regular, uh, great staff here at our Ministry of Transportation on doing that kind of work.
Thank you, uh, councillor Woodward.
Yeah, just a quick one, I just wanted to say like with, I'm just realizing too, the options here for Victoria Street, I mean, you have. People getting off going to the library, people getting off going to the government building, then you have some, uh, ready food right there.
Torres Pizza.
Torres Pizza, there's the barbecue place, there's the El Taco, I mean, it's a kind of, it's a nice synergy of, of businesses. And government buildings, uh, there, so, um, way to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'm, just a question, just for clarification, so, we, this is gonna come back to us next month and we're deciding on. You said an R F P, but I'm looking at the very last slide, which makes it look like we just have to say.
I, I think I.
You're an A.
Yes.
And it looks like somebody else is actually doing all the work, did I, did I read that wrong or?
Probably, maybe I misspoke.
Cause I'm sort of thinking like, because then I'm thinking, do I go home now and for the next month, s- study transit option A or C two. Based on the transit gurus who say those are probably one of the best two and then I'm gonna come and decide which one, but then I read the very last one, it says that. Then we, we, then we still have public engagement about A, C two, could be B.
Yeah, so again, I, I misspoke, I probably said R F P when I should have said R F D, that we were coming with R F D on October thirteenth. Will have similar information, but as at a decision making, uh, meeting, that we would get that direction from council to move forward. And from there, we would start the application, we would get to detailed designs, which would then allow us to go out to stakeholders and, you know, again, I think that. For most places, you're looking at an option A or option C two and trying to get the best of.
More about making the decision that, yes, we wanna, we wanna go ahead with this project. Yes, we realize tentatively right now the cost test is about four hundred thousand dollars and you're gonna do the rest of it and. Come back along the way, cause I just, I guess, there's always that concern, it's like, who knows how long this might get to float to the top of the. B C Transit, except for the fact that we've had some good quality engagement with them already, that hopefully, if the government changes. Or there's any dramatic changes in Victoria, that, that any plans or discussions we have with B C Transit hasn't changed that, that much.
Very fair, uh, B C Transit, uh, feels very confident that we can be successful in our grant.
Thank you.
All good?
All good.
Great.
Should've sent you home two hours ago.
Next time, send me home next time.
You learned something, though. It was actually a test. It was a test.
Staying?
Saved you, you saved you from watching the debate.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's it. All right. Last but not least, uh, motion to, no, late items, council reports or anything that you want to run here, no? Motion to adjourn.
Oh, just, oh, I just wanted to say, the swimming pool is gonna open in, um, on October the thirteenth, for anybody that doesn't know. It will be, um, shorter hours, uh, it will not be drop in.
Nope.
And I thought that's, um, that's kind of exciting, the other exciting, um, bit that I'm thinking about to come public with. Is that people may have on the periphery heard about Campbell Field, which is, um, a fairly substantive, um, parcel of land. It's, uh, at the junction and that there will be an, a community engagement process as to. What might be, um, potentially developed there, it's very open ended, um, they are covering all there, including Casagar. It's sweeping all the way, it's going up the valley, it's coming all the way this way, it will include all of, um, Director Faust's area, so it'll be a large. Um, open ended survey about what you kind of envision that could possibly be right there at the. Junction on this, uh, land for, for recre- can't be mini storage, for recreation or, um, cultural, uh, venues. The land does have a covenant, but it does also, um, include, uh, the concept of, uh, cultural activities as well, so. There could be a s- postcard or an invite coming to a home near you, or you can go on to the R D C K. Um, website and if I had, it was a really good tech guru, I'd be able to show you the video that I saw today, but. The video should have been uploaded as of late this afternoon or it'll be available on the website tomorrow about the process.
Excellent.
Thank you. All right, a motion to adjourn, please.